President, we're kind of at seven o'clock, the livestream is rolling and we can begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. It is seven o'clock. Our meeting is being called to order. I am Patty McCoyn. I am president of the school board. I'd like to thank everybody who is joining us live, or if you are watching at a later day. It was a beautiful day with the snow. Happily, it did not disturb the educational plans for the students today because that would be a little tragic for that. I'm going to have my fellow board members introduce themselves. We will start with Mr. Brooks.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining our virtual meeting tonight. Hope everybody likes what we present to you. Thank you. Bye.
Lauren.
Hello, everybody. I'm Lauren Christensen. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Patrick?
Hi, I'm Patrick Keough. Thanks for coming out and watching us tonight.
Anupam?
Good evening. This is Anupam Chikshidun. Thanks for joining us.
And Sean?
Good evening. I'm Sean Wilson.
All right, Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff, please?
Good evening, Superintendent Monica Merritt. I am pleased to be here. I welcome everyone for joining us this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and thank her for taking our minutes. And just thank everybody for participation this evening. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the team to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon. I have to admit, I was about to think about Charlie. If you remember, Charlie used to tape our videos. So that's why I paused for a minute, but we're still thinking of you, Charlie, and we miss you, Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Superintendent Merritt. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome to everybody, especially those watching the livestream.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening and welcome. Liz Vartanian-Gibbs, Human Resources.
Good evening, Curtis Quitz, Executive Director of Student Services. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, Heather Fitch-Patrick, President, Education Association. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Okay, and next on our agenda, we have the pledge, and Mr. Kehoe will be leading the pledge for all of us.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We are now at letter A, which is adoption of agenda, approval of consent agenda. This is action item 210139. I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, action item number 21-01-39.
Thank you. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved by members to do and seconded by member Kehoe. The adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda, action item 210139. Could you take us through it, please, Ms. Merritt?
Yes, the consent agenda this evening consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have new hires, as well as the resolution for the replacement of a computer technician, security and technology access coordinator, and a resolution for an administrative assistant for special education for your consideration. In addition, we have leaves, resignations, and retirements, as well as the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on January 12th, 2021, and our special meeting on January 14th, 2021.
Okay, so, Mr. Brooks, will you take us through a roll call vote, please?
Sure. First member is myself. Yes. Member Christensen?
Yes.
Okay, member Kehoe?
Yes.
Member McCoyn?
Yes.
Member Sodou?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you so much. Dr. Vartanian-Gibbs?
Good evening. I have the honor to introduce you to two new teachers in our district. First, Nicholas Chewie. Nicholas will be working at Pioneer Middle School as their resource room teacher. He comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University, and he is beginning his teaching career with us in Plymouth Canton Community Schools. So, welcome, Nicholas. We are glad you are here with us.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Next, I would like to introduce you to Andrew Jaiko. Andrew is our new math teacher at Discovery Middle School. He comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Wayne State University. Welcome, Andrew. Thank you for selecting our district. Well, actually, Andrew was a student here, so he's coming back. And it's a really short, neat story I'll share with you, that he's replacing Vicki Masiak at Discovery Middle School, who was his middle school math teacher. So, Andrew, thank you for returning and to provide service now to your students here in Plymouth Canton Community Schools.
Thank you for the opportunity to teach here and to go to this district a few years ago.
Great. So, congratulations to our new teachers. Welcome, and we are here to help you and support you. Next, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Lindsay Spore. Lindsay is going to be a computer technician here in our district. She has a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University, as well as over five years of experience in the technology world, supporting people with computers, and we are so grateful that she is here in our district to be a computer technician. So, welcome, Lindsay.
Thank you. I'm super excited to meet everybody.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next, we have Mr. Jerome Gersinski. And people know him by Jerry, and he's going to be our Security and Technology Access Coordinator. Jerry comes to us with over 25 years of experience installing, supporting, maintaining, and troubleshooting access control systems. He is certified in multiple software programs, and we would like to welcome him here to our district as the Security and Technology Access Coordinator. So, welcome, Jerry.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to join the district, and I look forward to working with the entire district.
Thank you. Welcome. And we also now would like you to meet Ms. Jennifer Byrd. So, Ms. Jennifer Byrd has been working in our district as a secretary for approximately seven years. She has a bachelor's degree in business administration, and this evening, we are bringing forward her appointment as the Administrative Assistant for Special Education. So, she would be working here at the E.J. McClain Bin Center. So, welcome, Jennifer, to your new position, and we are grateful to have you.
Thanks. I'm looking forward to it.
Congratulations to all of our new hires. Next, I would like to thank Mr. William Boyd for his 25 years of service in our district. He is retiring as a Salem High School teacher. He worked in the Social Studies Department. So, congratulations, Mr. Boyd. We are very happy for you, and we hope you enjoy every moment of your retirement. And that's all I have this evening.
We are now on to one of the more exciting portions of our evening. We are going to celebrate success. And tonight, we have Anupam will be presenting.
Thank you. It is actually quite an honor, because I have the great fortune of actually knowing this person at PCCS and throughout the county. So, celebrating success this evening, we are honoring Director of Technology Mark Seltzer and the Technology Team at PCCS. Mr. Seltzer was nominated by PCCS Media Center Specialist Danan McGuire for going above and beyond and leading the charge in getting technology devices into the hands of every student during the early months of the COVID-19 pandemic and beyond. At this time, we would like to invite Ms. McGuire to talk about the nomination for this outstanding group of leaders in our district.
Thank you so much. So, I am coming to you on behalf of all of the elementary media specialists, and I am sure the middle school and high school media specialists would agree with me that Mark and his team cannot be thanked enough for all that they did, especially at the beginning of this school year. They went, as you said, above and beyond, deploying devices to countless thousands of students this year in such a short amount of time. Part of, the part that impacted the media specialist the most was his support of technology integration. There were numerous new programs, many you've heard of, probably some that you haven't, from Canvas to Seesaw, Sora, Destiny Discover, which is our library catalog. All of those had to be reimagined. They didn't just happen because we switched from just what was Safe Start, Regular School, to Safe Start and Virtual Academy. And so, all the little bugs and everything that went in that, the complexities of integrating, they're just mind-boggling to me. So, I asked some of the media specialists what they wanted me to say tonight to thank Mark, and some of the things they said were, Mark has always listened to our needs and tries to support us. His understanding of both teaching and technology is an asset to his position and our district. His cooperative spirit is inspiring. And I would personally add that he works endless hours to help ensure that we get quick and helpful responses. So, thank you very, very much, Mark. We appreciate all that you did for us, our students, our families, everybody in the Plymouth Canton District.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. Those are beautiful words, and this is such a well-deserved award for Mark and his team. Mark is such a humble and hard-working person who truly models what it means to be a servant leader. Mark and his team are also respected throughout the county where I've gotten to know them outside of PCCS. And what you described, Ms. McGuire, is just, you know, just so typical of Mark in terms of his leadership qualities and his humility, and going above and beyond. So, Mark, on the behalf of the Board of Education, I present Mark Seltzer and his team with the Mary Beth Carroll Extramiler Award. Mr. Seltzer, would you like to say a few words about this recognition?
Mark, you're muted.
All right. Sorry about that. Here we go.
It muted again, Mark.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Nope. Now you went away again. We can hear you.
Last try. All right, I'm hopeful. I just have, I think I'm playing tag with the host. I want to just thank you all very much for the recognition. I'm glad to accept it on behalf of a hard-working, dedicated team, as well as a number of volunteers, especially in those early months, who helped us along the way. It was, and it continues to be, a team effort. We're excited to support the students and our families, and we just thank you for the recognition tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Congratulations to Mr. Seltzer and his team for earning this esteemed recognition. Thank you for all that you do to help our students, staff, and families learn, prepare, and thrive every day with PCCS. So, big round of applause for Mark and the team.
All right, so now we are on to Board Committee Reports and Action. The first up is the President's Report. So, this last weekend, this last weekend was the Plant Marine Park Hill Seminar, Part One. And Anupam attended, Ms. Merritt attended, and Ms. Piaz also attended. There were two parts to it. So, the first, the first session was a refresher. It was an early bird session. It was a refresher on school finance, the basics of it. And they covered a little bit about the the challenges during COVID, and how the districts had to be so flexible, because the budget from the state wasn't passed until after we had to have our budget. And so, seeing that made me appreciate even more the hard work that Ms. Piaz and her team do to keep us on track. When you just hear about all the things that changed, and they have to be ready to move on, and then they had a general session. Unlike past years where we are in person, the next session will be in a couple of weeks. They're doing two half-day virtual sessions. So, it's always a lot of interesting, good information. The only thing we're missing this year is a chance to collaborate with other boards, which is always something that we do enjoy doing, but we can't get everything. And so, that is it for my report. And then, we are on to student performance and achievement.
Thank you, President McCoyn. We did not have a meeting in January, so there are no new meeting updates to report from the last time we met. I would like to share that there is an opening for a community committee member to serve on this committee, and this is a volunteer position. One of our members had to change her job, which caused a conflict with our meeting time, so we have a vacancy that I would like to fill. Please go to the PCCSK12.com website for details. Letters of interest and supporting documents are due by next Friday, February 5th, 4:00 p.m. After that point, we will do interviews to finalize the new committee members. Our next meeting is February 3rd at 4:00 p.m. We will be meeting remotely via Zoom. Everyone is welcome to attend. Some of the topics that we'll be discussing are summer programming, updates on the state and federal assessments with WIDA, NAEP, M-STOP, and we'll also get an update on the school reentry planning for in-person learning and the progress they're making. That's the update for SPA.
Thank you so much. The next is policy, and we met this evening before our, this, this meeting that we're having right now. We are welcoming Sean Wilson to our committee. He has joined. Kate Borninsky had been the third board member on our committee, and she stepped down when she left the board. So, we were happy to have him, and in honor of that, we had a short meeting tonight. So, we did get through video streaming policy, which will allow video streaming of athletics and activities, which will be very helpful for community members if sports start up again, so that family can at least watch from home and see their athletes, and also would allow some activities to be streamed. And then, we did the, finished up with the telework policy, which was required by the state due to the myosha requirements and different things. And then, a few policies that we are, had just had to update to keep them current with the current law. Our next meeting is February 23rd, 2021. At this point, it will be also Zoom. It's at 5:30. Anybody is welcome to join us. And next up is Mr. Kehoe.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, January 21st. We discussed the technology consulting contract that will be on the agenda this evening for approval, and had an opportunity to speak to our attorney on the terms and conditions for that, as well as the, the provider Barton Mallow on the services that they're going to provide. We got an update on the elementary school construction projects that have, the design has been complete, and those are out to bid right now. We expect that those will come back to the board in February when the bids are returned. And we got an update, or we did the, went over the financial statements for the month of December. Our next board meeting, or our next FNO committee meeting, is Thursday, February 4th. It's at 5:00 p.m. It will be a Zoom meeting at this time, and we welcome people to participate. Thank you.
All right, so next up, we are down to D, which is Administrative Reports and Recommendations. So, first up, we have a Superintendent's Report. Ms. Merritt?
Thank you, President McCoyn. Before I kick off the reconfirmation meeting for this month, I just want to begin with just sharing some true words of appreciation. This is to our entire staff, our maintenance staff, our food service, our secretarial paraprofessional security extended day, our transportation, our custodial staff, our building, district-level administrators, our support staff, our board members, our teachers. Everybody has been working around the clock to ready our buildings to welcome our secondary students back to in-person learning, and I am truly, truly grateful for today, because we were able to achieve that goal. I have to say that there's a lot of anxiety. There's a lot of fear, a lot of concern. People feel that we're rushing a plan. But today, everybody's individual feelings were put aside in order to be ready and show up for our kids, and it was a great feeling. There was so much excitement in our buildings today. I had the pleasure of stopping by West Middle School today, and, and Mr. Smiley and Ms. Kozeki style, they, they run a tight ship. They were there with their students. They were so eager, they're sixth-grade students, and just happy to be back in school, and they were really teaching our protocols. Two, two of my takeaways today, their words for this year, be deliberate and improve stamina. So, they were really teaching their students about making deliberate decisions on everything that they do as we're navigating this new, new normal in-person through this pandemic, and they just did an amazing job, and the kids were attentive, wearing their mask and doing exactly what they needed to do, because they're glad to be back in person. As you know, today, we did welcome our sixth through ninth grade students back, also our high school students in specialized courses. They're rejoining our K through five students that came back last week in their hybrid model, and there's so much energy and excitement around the buildings. We're sharing some of those highlights on our website, so you can just hear the positive stories that are happening. Our staff did an amazing job. They continue to do amazing, an amazing job, and I didn't expect anything less. I will actually share and confess, there was so much, just, it's so much anxiety. There's so much noise. I got in my car, I exhaled, and I cried, and it was tears of joy, because as hard as it is, and as challenging as it is, and as we second-guess decisions and everything, the right thing to do is to provide options in person, if we're able to safely do so for students that want that option, and students today wanted that option, and they went home, home happy. So, I just want to share that gratitude and, and how thankful I am for all of our staff for providing that opportunity. I do also need to make sure that I apologize on behalf of the district, because as wonderful as today was, it definitely was not without challenges. I know there's been confusion. I know there's been frustration experienced with the inundation of communication that feels like it's coming at the last minute and changing as, you know, transportation, for example, as we finalize this transition. So, I do want to apologize, understand that this is a learning experience. As we navigate this process, one of the areas that we're really working to tweak is that transportation area. I know we said early on, transportation really needed from us a full two weeks in order to route students, and this is a little bit more difficult than regular routing, because we are trying to keep this late start for middle and high school, and so that involves some creativity. There were some hiccups that occurred for routing of students. Transportation is currently reworking those assignments on the cohort assignments, and we're going to ensure it will get smoother. So, I ask parents for our continued disgrace and patience. We are working to make sure that we have the building safe, transportation safe, everything in place as we continue on with our in-person learning. So, once again, just want to make sure that, have that opportunity to, just own that. We recognize that, and every day, we're striving to get better as we welcome our students back to school. I want to also just give a quick update on vaccines. I think it's important to speak, because there is some confusion about who holds the vaccine plan. I know it was announced early on that 1B educators will receive their vaccines or become eligible on January 11th, and that made us also excited as we were readying for in-person learning. The reality is that the vaccines are held by the Health Department, so we don't control the vaccine distribution or the plan. We work in consultation with the Health Department, and we are awaiting our directions as it relates to when we will receive a schedule for Plymouth Canton teachers. We have been informed that the Health Department is intending to begin that distribution this week, but they have not determined, or shared with us, rather, the plan about which districts. And keep it in mind that we have our 33 districts, as well as charter schools, private schools, so they're responsible for all school employees in Wayne County, so that's over 110 districts. And so, we anxiously await getting that information. Meanwhile, we are definitely encouraging our staff, if there's any, through their own local health departments, any opportunities to receive the vaccine, take advantage of that vaccine. What we have been told consistently is it is not an unwillingness to be vaccinated, so I need our community to know that. Our staff want to be vaccinated, a large portion, and I think that's throughout the county, it's throughout the state, throughout the country. It's a supply issue is what we're hearing, and so, as they're ramping up their supply, they're working on these plans. They will communicate to us. We will then communicate what we know, when we know it, to our staff. We're keeping an updated FAQ so that as we have more information, we're pushing it out and then letting it reside in that FAQ to continue to answer those questions. So, just wanted to bring some clarity around that. I definitely wanted to make sure that we uncouple. That is, that is a mitigation strategy. It's only going to help us to continue to keep our building safe, but we are not tying in-person learning to 100% vaccination, and that is not a mandatory condition of employment. So, some may choose not to, and that is their right not to. But I do know that there's quite a few members of our staff that are definitely interested in receiving that vaccine. So, that's just by way of an update. But once again, we will provide information as soon as we, it is available to us. We just don't have any further details at this point. Final piece I wanted to just share is our PCCS Virtual Town Hall is scheduled for Monday, February 1st. This will be 4:30 to 6:30. We are working once again with the parent council in order to offer this event for our community. Attendings will, attendees will be able to view this event via livestream using the district's official YouTube channel. So, you'll search PCCS Official on YouTube to locate it. If you have any questions, we would like for you to give your questions in advance, and so that you'll find the directions on how you can submit that online form. The window to send questions using this form will open on Wednesday, the 27th, at 10:00 a.m., and will close on Saturday, January 30th, at 4:00 p.m. We are really looking forward to this event. We, we know that this was an ask early. We've had success. It's an opportunity to stay better connected with our community, with board meetings. I know it frustrates families at times that they are making comments, and they want that two-way interaction, and the board meetings aren't set up for two-way interactions. And so, we tried to provide this other avenue so that they can have questions, and we have that ability to answer those questions, and then keep that ongoing information in an FAQ, so people can access that in the event that they are not able to attend. So, Virtual Town Hall, for those that are interested, tune in on Monday, 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. With that, I'd like to move into our reconfirmation meeting. As you know, as Mr. Brandon pulls up the screen, this is a component, mandatory component or requirement of MCL 388.1698A of our State Aid Act. And this is the requirement that we, before the board, discuss our instructional And this is the requirement that we, before the board, discuss our instructional delivery plans and make sure that we are reconfirming those plans each and every month. If there's a change to those plans, we address that during this time period. And we will ask at the end of this evening for board to consider approval. Before going through, I always like to spend some time on data and metrics that we monitor daily as we make decisions about in-person learning. Prior to doing so, a difference that you see on this slide is the updated State of Michigan Guidelines for Operating Schools Safely. As I shared with you and the community, January 8th, we received these new guidelines from the state. We heard from our governor and there was a goal that was set for all school districts to offer an in-person learning option for students. It was stated as soon as possible, but no later than March 1st. Still giving districts a local control over which plans work best, but offering these guidelines that actually replace the past roadmap that was in, previously in place. These guidelines really focus on specific mitigation strategies and requirements as well as recommendations for schools to open or remain open under our current levels of spread that are now prevailing within our state. More information that we know about COVID-19 and really looking at a holistic approach to keep schools open. Many of the recommendations are the same, including the requirement to wear masks and have frequent hand washing, finding measures to reduce density where feasible. So that's when you look at, at hybrid plans and ways to reduce the density within buildings. And they have additional mitigation strategies that are also addressed. And we'll talk a little bit more about those this evening. During our meeting on January the 14th, the Board of Education approved the next iteration of our in-person learning plans for our Safe Start students. And that will allow our students to return in a phased-in approach. We know we're talking K through nine in specialized classes. Mr. Brandon, if you can just stay on that page, I'm not ready to go forward yet. While our 10th, 10th through 12th grade students continue receiving instruction remotely as we finalize plans for their return. But before I walk through that timeline, I do want to state very clearly that these timelines are targeted timelines. We are, as I say, each month in the midst of a pandemic. And especially, I will say, with the arrival of the new COVID-19 variants. I believe as of today, there were at least 12 cases in both Wayne and Washtenaw County of the variant B117. And so we know that we need to continue to monitor what is happening. And then these variants have come since even our last plans were approved. So we want to assure our teachers, our staff, our families that we, one, the preventative measures that we have in place, we've been told and assured that they will continue to work against these variants, but also that we are continuing to monitor our school, our district, our community, our county metrics in consultation with the health department. And if we have to consider pausing this timeline, we have this transition that's laid out at this point to move to full in-person learning. If we have to pause and remain in a hybrid, we absolutely will do so. So we need to, I need everybody to hear from me in this moment that things change in a pandemic daily. And so it is very important for us to have targeted dates. And that's why that plan is approved. I know people say, hey, it feels like this plan is rushed, but we have communicated in our intention to return our secondary students to a form of in-person learning for the second semester since we begin, since we've begun planning. But once again, now that we have shared the plan with these timelines that have been approved, we always want to be very clear that if the data and what's happening within our schools warrants a pause even to a full in-person delivery model, we absolutely will come back to the board and make that decision. So I just wanted to make sure that I shared that. So as we look at the data and the metrics, we wanted to include this State of Michigan guidelines. I've sent that to all families in my communication that went out right after that guideline came out. We also have updated that on our website. So it is prominent for families. And I just want to go through the same metrics that we continue to view, that out Wayne County, of course, those are the COVID-19 weekly reports. These come out every week. They're sharing six different metrics that are included. This is the total number of confirmed cases. Remember that out Wayne County excludes the city of Detroit because the city of Detroit have their own health department. When we look at those guidelines, it gives us a 7% positivity rate in the county hospital occupancy for inpatient beds and for ICU beds, testing capacity rates in out Wayne County, the number of outbreaks in out Wayne County. So we are consistently measuring and monitoring that data. We also continue to use the COVID Act Now website. And I always talk about this as putting information in graph form, which is really easier for us to understand the data at times in that area. COVID Act 19 is based on a team of technologists, epidemiologists, health experts, public policy leaders. They all work to provide this data on COVID-19. They update this information regularly. Our Michigan data portals, we want to make sure that we continue to provide access to our community to those because those are multiple data points that we review as we make our decisions for in-person learning. The weekly dashboard for PCCS municipalities and local data reports, we are very fortunate through our wallet school committee, Dr. Summers and a graduate assistant compiled this county and local data and created this interactive dashboard. And this updates every one to two days as new, new data comes in. And this has been very helpful to us in our community, just a really great and current indicator of what is going on. And I think it's most important because the next area, the Wayne County Health Department's Community Spread Risk Dashboard, I know that throughout, that was a bi-weekly indicator that was posted on the Wayne County Health Department site. And it really addresses the risk levels by municipalities. And we've noticed over time that that was not being updated regularly. With the rollout of the new state guidelines, Wayne County Health Department will no longer plan to publicize those bi-weekly risk levels for all of the municipalities in Wayne County. And I think that's really congruent with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, as we talked about, I think, last week, have moved away from the use of that matrix that they had worked with the local health departments on. And, and once again, looking in favor of a more holistic assessment of multiple pandemic metrics. And so with that, we are going to take that link away from our website. We'll remove it from this chart when we come back each month. So you won't see that any longer. But we definitely continue to work directly with our local health department as they too monitor the transmission rates by municipalities. Final piece of information is our COVID-19 associated cases. And remember, under our latest EO from MDHHS, all districts must update and confirmed and probable cases of COVID-19 in the school districts within a 24 hours of notification. So that is current and that is information that is posted on our website. Moving on, next we're going to walk the board through our required elements of the reconfirmation meeting. And this is for the benefit of our community as well. As we know, our initial plan was approved by the board on September the 29th, 2020. That initial approval provided for two instructional delivery models. One, the PCCS Virtual Academy, that's 100% virtual model, guaranteed model for the entire school year. And two, the Safe Start Remote Learning with PCCS. And that is a model that became, began 100% virtually with a planned phased-in approach to full in-person learning when we were, are able to do so. So as we look through, I'll just walk through each of these by level. Our pre-kindergarten is currently offering a blend of in-person and virtual instruction based on individual programming needs. There's no change in this area. Our elementary, based on the approved plan on January the 14th, Safe Starts with PCCS. Our elementary students return kindergarten through fifth grade in their blue-green half-day cohort, cohorts, cohorts, and are doing a wonderful job, are really focusing on literacy, numeracy, social emotional learning and that targeted time that they have face-to-face with their teachers and then doing the remainder of their work asynchronously. February 17th is our targeted date for kindergarten through fifth grade students to begin a full five-day-per-week in-person model. And this is utilizing the guidelines that are in place, making sure that we have all of the mitigation strategies, they are effective, watching the transmission rates within our buildings, how effective our, our, our plans are going. Right now, that target date for planning purposes would be February 17th that we bring our elementary students back for full in-person learning. And with our elementary students, once again, the PCCS Virtual Academy, 100% virtual model is still an option. When we look at our secondary students, our middle school students first, Safe Start with Remote Learning, the timeline that was approved on the 14th, for the week of January 26th, that's this week, our sixth grade students are starting first, really to get them oriented to the in-person learning, to their new schools. This is the first time in the school buildings. Our ninth grade students as well, but we'll get to high school in a moment. And to that, this week only, because we didn't have Monday for, uh, school for students. It was a workday. Tuesday and Wednesday, the blue cohort attends, full days. Thursday, Friday, the green cohort attends. February 1st, we bring our seventh and eighth grade students back in a hybrid model. So all sixth, seventh and eighth grade students will attend in a hybrid model, Monday and Tuesday being for blue cohort, Thursday, Friday, green cohort. Wednesdays remain all-day live virtual instruction. February 18th is right now the targeted transition date for our students to begin to move away from the hybrid model and come to a full four-day-per-week in-person model. Still keeping Wednesdays in February as virtual live instruction. And we talked about that need just because of the shared teachers that we have between the virtual academy and in-person learning. And so that is a four-day-a-week with the final target for middle school students of March 1st, moving to a full five-day week per model. Once again, target, we continue to monitor what's going on within our communities, our mitigation plans, what's happening at our buildings for transmission rates before making the final decision to move forward, but that is our target. PCCS Virtual Academy again is that second option for our families. And the final group of students in our instructional delivery model are our high school students. And just to review, review again, the timeline that has been approved for our high school students, this week, our ninth grade students and those in specialized classes resumed instruction in person today. Tuesday, Wednesday, blue cohort, Thursday, Friday, green cohort for this week only. Our 10th, 11th and 12th grade students continuing to receive instruction virtually, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week. Going into next week, continuing on now with Monday, Tuesday for blue cohort, Thursday, Friday for green, Wednesdays being all-day virtual. And once again, that will be throughout the month of February. On the 28th, our Starkweather Academy students in identified courses begin in a hybrid model. On February 18th, this is the target date for ninth grade students and students in high school specialized classes to begin a full four-day-per-week in-person model, Wednesdays again, all virtual live instruction. March 1st, ninth grade students in a full five-day-a-week in-person model. And at that time, 10th, 11th and 12th grade students having an option to return to in-person learning. And our district learning design team, it meets again tomorrow, are looking at, will continue to look at recommendations that come out of the building, learning design teams to determine if that is a hybrid or a fully in-person model. And that information will be communicated as it is finalized. But once again, I emphasize paying attention to the nature of this pandemic and how things change daily. And we will not move forward with any plan unless we believe that it is safe for us to do so. Once again, PCCS Virtual Academy is available for our high school students as an option as well. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Tiskowitz to walk us through our two-way interaction rates for this month.
Thank you, Superintendent Merritt. As required in the COL, we are tracking our two-way interaction rates. Primarily, we use attendance to track our two-way interaction rates with our students, but it's not limited to just attendance. It could be that we're interacting with them through assignments that are given and, and returned. Could be a small group instruction, those kind of things. But on average, we average about 97.8% interaction rate with our, our students weekly. You can see that it's been pretty consistent since day one back in September. With that, I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Merritt.
Just to look again at our approved mitigation plan, and we know that we do have this approved plan through Wayne County Health Department. We've consistently been given high, uh, high marks on our mitigation plan. For the most part, and as I shared in the beginning, the mitigation plans and the recommendations requirements have not changed from the guidelines from the state. But there are some changes that I, changes that I want to make sure that I note here. The personal protective equipment is still a requirement. Our staff and students must wear masks at all times unless they are eating. And that is a, a time when we have that mask break if they're eating or drinking. And that's really specific how we handle that. But personal protective equipment is available for any student that may miss or leave something at home. We have right on the buses, right, extra supply at schools. If something happened that it breaks, we have plenty of PPE. We've distributed masks and PPE to our staff at all buildings and have a process in place if there is need for additional. I believe we keep a two-month supply of all of our PPE just to make sure that we never run out. It is that important. When we look at spacing, movement and access, this is one shift that we see from the roadmap into this guidelines from the state. Although we still look to, when we think about, I've gotten the question this week, the CDC guidelines, what's going on from six feet to three feet? So optimally, six feet is still ideal in terms of the spacing, especially when you're looking at students being unmasked. So of course, we need to make sure that we're looking at the strengths of wearing our masks and, and the effectiveness of that. When we look to the new guidelines and we look to instructional spaces, six feet is always the goal, but they've now looked to say the requirement or the, really is the strong recommendation, not requirement. It, it should, they're recommending that be no, as a minimum of three feet. And so when we look to three feet, if there are classrooms that based on the number of students that are there, even with reduced density, cannot achieve that six feet, if we are at that minimum of three feet, we're looking to bring on additional mitigation strategy. So as you all are aware, we have air purifiers in every one of our classroom spaces, our lunch spaces, our office spaces. In addition, we are in the process of distributing some, the acrylic and plastic barriers that may be put on individual desks for students that aren't able to achieve that spacing. And we are still just determining how, how many more of those barriers we might need. In addition, we're also looking at our staffing levels. And we have, especially in the second grade level, the second, um, secondary level classes that the class size and Safe Start is still relatively large. So even as we reduce density through a hybrid, we have quite a few students. So as we're planning for this full transition, we do have some teaching positions that are posted right now and will look K through 12 to hire additional staff as another effort to continue to minimize or reduce density within the building. Hygiene is still very important. So hand hygiene, there's hand sanitizer, there's protocols that are being taught throughout the weeks as students have returned and the importance of frequent hand washing. Bussing and transportation has not changed. Screening for students has not changed. Food service gathering, I do want to talk about the requirements within food service, although we see that shift from six to three feet within the instructional faces, spaces. If we have those additional mitigation strategies, we're really clear that we are working to achieve six feet in the cafeteria or in classroom spaces when students are not masked and, and they're eating just as that additional precaution. So our schools are working, what you'll notice is that in their tables, they've blocked off if they're using cafeteria spaces, what six feet looks like, working with even our building teaching staff to allow for multiple areas within the building, students eating in lunch and, and, and a way that I'll, eating lunch in classrooms in a way that will allow them to keep six feet. So looking at all measures and really being very intentional, even about those 15-minute kind of spurts. And so like even instructions today were to tell students as you're walking to get your lunch, you keep your mask on when you take your seat at that assigned location. You keep your mask on. You do not take your mask off until you're ready to eat. As soon as you're finished eating, pop that mask back on. And then we're still continuing to use, utilize recess and opportunities to then move students outside while, while another group of students are eating. So having those plans really working at the building level just so that everyone, staff and students are aware, how we work together to actively keep our students safe. In terms of extracurricular activities, we are still working under state guidelines as it relates to winter sports. And I know I've gotten some emails from parents, really wanting all of us to advocate to. And I know I've gotten some emails from parents, really wanting all of us to advocate to have sports open up. And we all have that desire. We want to make sure, we know how important that is for our students. But once again, we do have to follow the laws and what is in place. And so right now, we are ready and listening for any changes that take place from the Michigan High School Athletics Association and from the state. But at this point, we're still adhering to those regulations that are in place. Further going on with our testing protocols, cleaning, all of those are still in place. I will share, and I don't know if Trustee Kehoe wants to jump in, but as we're working on our district learning design team, there is a subcommittee and Trustee Kehoe is leading that subcommittee with one of our epidemiologists that's on our wallet school committee, another doctor as well as Nurse Atset, our school nurse, really kind of just looking at our mitigation strategies that we have in place and looking at metrics. So as we move forward and really kind of defining some parameters around certain areas that may be triggers for us if we need to move in a different direction. And so working to really finalize that, we have a meeting tomorrow. So we'll discuss some of those recommendations. And once we finalize those, we will bring those forward for the full board at the next meeting.
So did you want me to speak up at all?
I think this would be great if you want to jump in.
You've done a good job of describing it. It is an epidemiologist with Dr. Summers from the University of Michigan. She's been working with us for a while. We also pulled in Dr. Heinen, who is in charge of the pediatric practice for IHA in southeastern Michigan here and has been a strong advocate of the strong protection practices, but also getting kids back into school. And of course, Nurse Atset. And we've been working on, as Ms. Merritt described, the COVID mitigations. How do we measure and put those things in place to make sure that we have the right protections? How do we track and report those things so that we can understand the impact of those to our go-forward plans and our ability to meet those things to be successful? The testing processes that we would use to make sure that we know what is happening from a test point of view. And then as she mentioned, the disease spread and the impact of that. So one of the things that we see is in the guidelines that we received from the state is that it is predominantly about the local metrics that occur within our school community. That is the most important thing for us to be looking at. That the recent data that's come from the CDC, from the state, from a variety of other sources is that your biggest indicator of you having challenges or problems is the spread within your school community. And we've been blessed in the past that we don't see significant spread in the community, but we're creating those metrics to allow us to measure that. And then also to identify the impact of that, even when the spread isn't within the community, the impact on the district. For example, you might have spread that occurs outside the school community or positive cases, but you would see excessive number of quarantined either staff or students that could impact our ability to effectively educate. And that might require us to go virtual or to look at other strategies in order to manage that. All of those things are being worked on by that subcommittee. We're bringing them forward to the district design team as part of that process.
Thank you very much. As we bring closure to this portion of the presentation, want to just talk about next steps. We need to provide an opportunity for publics to have, the public to have comments. So we will do so, not ask the board to take action until the end of this meeting. So we'll have an opportunity to hear from our public on how things are going through citizens' comments. Ask you then to consider approval of a resolution to reconfirm this plan. Our documents will be posted to the transparency link on the official PCCS website and provided to SEPI as required. And our next reconfirmation meeting will take place on Tuesday, February twenty-third. Once again, we have two board meetings up in, already scheduled in February. If there's any time that we need to look to schedule a special meeting, if there's an opportunity to pivot based on what's going on within our school community, we absolutely will take and ask the board for that opportunity to do so. So with that, I am going to end this presentation here and open up the floor for any questions. President McLean.
All right, Laura, you are starting tonight.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Merritt for the update, the thorough update here on the COVID nineteen preparedness plan. I just have a few questions about the mitigation strategies. I know we touched on this at our last meeting when we, you know, obviously approved the plan to move forward in this manner. You know, one thing that we discussed last time was, you know, with regard to screenings of staff that the state of Michigan had the availability of that antigen testing or that rapid testing. And I just wanted to know where are we at in the process of, you know, maybe getting those tests or training our staff with that rapid testing availability?
With the testing, the indication for us so far, we just had to respond as a district that we would be interested in learning more or participating. So we haven't heard back yet from the state level in terms of next steps. I know that there has been some discussion on the antigen testing, even within the subcommittee that Trustee Kehoe is leading. And Trustee Kehoe, you might want to step in for me, kind of look at those different.
Yeah. So initially, some of the feedback from the epidemiologist and some of the data says that antigen testing was not as effective at an infrequent basis. That if you do this every day or every three days, you essentially completely stop the spread of the disease in the school. But there is still a substantial benefit that if you do this once a week as being proposed by the state, where we would offer to every staff the ability to be screened once a week, it still is a chance to reduce the infection of the, by more than sixty, I'm sorry, between sixty-two and sixty-six percent. So it's a substantial reduction in the, especially in the case of asymptomatic spread that you can see happen because you catch those cases before they can spread throughout the community and the school community. It is something that the state is offering to all districts and that they have enough tests available at no additional cost to us to allow us to do that. We're working with the, our nurse staff and the teams to do that. Initial indications that we heard was this might start as soon as February first. But given that we've already expressed the interest and have not heard anything, I don't think that it will start that quickly. But as soon as we can get that going, we think it'll be another helpful mitigation measure to help catch some of that unintended spread within the district, even if it is just for staff and even if it is optional.
And that is, that is the piece right now. I know we've been talking, there's been the desire. And once again, for staff members saying that this is something that they would be receptive to. And that could just be, at this point, we're looking at an option, may not be, we're not looking for that to be a requirement. But it definitely would be an additional mitigation strategy that we could utilize to continue to keep a reduced spread or transmissions within our building.
Did you have any more questions, Lauren, or are you done?
You're on mute, Lauren. No audio. We see you calling off mute, but we don't hear you.
Hey, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
That's so strange because it said I was not muted this whole time. I apologize. No, that's the last question for me right now. Thank you.
Okay, Patrick, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think you did a great job of describing the process, Ms. Merritt. And thank you for all the hard work that the team has been doing as part of this. Obviously, the area that has the most concern to me and what we hear from a lot of the community members is around the distancing. And I know that we've done a lot of work and you've described some of that work. But some of the things that we've discussed were things like moving unnecessary furniture out of the classroom. I know that we may not have that problem with the hybrid process, that we can probably achieve that six feet distance. But we don't want to use three feet as the minimum. We want to establish the maximum amount of space that we can possibly get. And I understood that that was some of the work that was happening. Can you update us in terms of what's going on with that, the progress towards that and where we're at with it?
So all of the above in terms of the things that you are sharing, trying to move around furniture when possible. We've actually sent out communication last week for any items that may even be personal items such as couches or additional chairs that staff may have to remove those personal items and get those out of the building and give them a date to do so. Looking at even changing different furniture. So when we have some tables, replacing the tables maybe with desks, that'll provide us more room. Looking also, and to your point, as we're in the hybrid model, finding, utilizing this time before the planned transition to really get more or gather more space when possible within the rooms. We've even talked about, is there the need to get, we don't have any storage, of course, within the district. So a lot of this extra furniture is being stored in gymnasiums and media centers. And so we need to make sure that we move those and clear those areas out in the event that we need those bigger spaces for some classrooms that are larger so that they can move and have classes there. Also talking about potential for either some temporary pods that could use to store furniture outside or storage facilities that we could use to store. So going through those processes with our maintenance department to determine, really looking at the number of students that we have assigned, how we can continue to thin out our furniture and other strategies that we can use. And once again, as I talked about, also is even looking at our staffing alone. And is there additional staff that we need to bring to further reduce the density among our students?
So when do you think, when do you think we'll have that information on the distance that's there? Because I know it's an ongoing process, but knowing those numbers will help the board and the community to feel comfortable with what we've been doing.
So very soon, I believe that the elementary is done right now. And I think I got information this afternoon on middle school, so still working to finalize high school. And so I know that we will review some information tomorrow during our district leadership design team. And it's ongoing. They're working hard to get that information to us.
Okay. And then my second question is in the same vein around the lunchrooms. I think that that has some of the highest risk that's there. You know, we know that students wearing masks or, when people are wearing masks, it drastically lowers the spread of the disease. But when you're having lunch periods or you're having snacks in classrooms, those both seem to be opportunities to increase the spread. And we want to make sure that there is that six feet of distancing. The state guidelines were pretty clear that that was not a minute, or I'm sorry, a flexible item, that they really wanted that six feet of distancing that's there. So can you talk a little bit about our success in that? Have we been able to achieve that?
Yeah. So as we've shared, that really is a goal for us. And I know that they use the words, "we're feasible." And so that, what we say is we take everything within our power to achieve the six feet. So when we're utilizing our cafeteria spaces, we're marking off locations where, you know, the student will sit and that gets that six feet. Working with our entire staff, our paraprofessionals, our teaching staff, we're actually during this time period trying to increase the stipend for lunch coverage that would allow, if teachers are willing to bring classroom, you know, if there's three, four, or five kids that could eat lunch within the classroom and maintain six feet, that's always going to be an optimal environment. So just being able to utilize all spaces that are available, staggering lunch periods. So you're seeing the addition of certain additional lunch periods within that time period. So working out, it might look differently at different buildings, just based on staffing and needs and designs, but looking at that overall goal of when students are eating with their masks off to have that six feet. And we are continuing to just kind of use at all times this idea of reducing density. And so whenever possible, spreading people or students out, when eating and when not, spreading students out and so that we can continue to reduce that density when they're in their spaces together.
Okay. I know you mentioned the words "when feasible," and I know that that's in the state guidelines. But I think it'll be important for us as a board to understand when it's not feasible. So if you can get back to us with any situations, either buildings or scenarios where we're not able to achieve that and what we've explored to try to address it.
Yeah, we will, we will have that. That's what we're working on now. And as I said, if there's any places that we can, and we're getting feedback now on the different locations where students will be able to go during lunch, you know, additional tables out in the hallways, just multiple measures to get to that. And if there's ever a space where we can't, then looking at additional, you know, barriers that we can also utilize. And so we're really focused on that. As I said, it's on, all hands on deck. And I'm really appreciative of just staff working together creatively to help us accomplish that goal within the buildings and keep everyone safe.
Okay, thank you.
Anubba? Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Merritt for coordinating the town hall on February first. I know community members are eager to hear all of the great work that you and your team are doing with regard to having all these moving parts come together to keep everyone safe. And thank you for also sharing the little bit of the introduction you had in the presentation with regard to the flexibility that is needed from all of us with regard to these plans. As we hear more and more about the new strand, which I think is very alarming, just a year ago in March, you know, almost a year ago, we heard about a few cases and no one expected the explosion to be so large within just a few weeks. And my worry is the same with this new strand, which spreads at a much higher rate. And there is still so much uncertainty, unknowns about the new strand. So with that, it's going to kind of turn into a question for maybe Patrick or other members of the team. Is this coming up in the metrics decisions and the conversations with the medical experts with regard to the mitigation strategies that we were looking at? And again, you know, six feet is where I think we should have our standard mark. And then masking, are you and the team talking about new information about masks? Meaning double masking, minimum of three layers of masks? The distancing, especially as we see this new strand, that can spread far more quickly? So can you share any insight on that?
I'm sorry, go ahead, either, go ahead, Maya.
All right. I was going to say, to your point about things changing so quickly. And so absolutely, those, as we remain in consultation, and I think I shared earlier, we're being assured that the mitigation strategies that we have in place will still protect us from the new strand, but there's still so much unknown as well. So even hearing conversations about double masking, we will definitely continue to work in consultation with the health department. If there's any change to guidelines and even if not, you know, what are we able to do within a school? That's really the continued work of our committees. And I will also share, just moving the idea, I think as we look to three to six feet, as we even heard from, you know, our committees, we really want to just focus on that idea of in utilizing that language of reducing density, because just that, that six feet, somebody might say, hey, we need ten feet or four feet. Really making sure that we're adhering to mitigation strategies while reducing density is our goal as we continue to move forward. But by all means, continuing to really talk about, as there's more that is understood about this new strand, you know, what suggestions that they have. And we will definitely, as we have from the beginning, work in consultation with the experts and follow recommendations and requirements that come down the line.
And so just to add a little bit on to that, we did discuss briefly within the team, both masks and the B-1117 strain. The metrics that we've seen with respect to the B-1117, we believe that they will show up just as easily in the process. We'll see the same, we'll see, we have the potential to see an increased spread in school because it is more contagious. But our metrics will capture that in terms of the number of school-associated cases or the non-associated cases in school. With respect to masks, the, we had a discussion around gators, which is something that has scientifically been shown that is not effective. And I believe that we've now incorporated that into our guidelines, even though that that is not something that the county specifically calls out. And we had, we just started a conversation on double masking or multi-layer masks. That specific focus that we had was on surgical masks versus homemade masks. That the surgical masks, even the ones that might be available at Costco or other stores like that are more effective. And that if families can have those, if staff can have those things, then those are things that you should consider as part of that process to provide a higher level of protection. Certainly, regular masks are still very effective, but surgical masks are there. And we also had a discussion on our metrics on district-provided PPE, especially for staff, to make sure that we can provide those, potentially those higher quality protections available for them.
Okay. You know, at some point, I'd like to get like a larger medical perspective on this. As we, as we're getting more and more into. As we, as we're getting more and more into bringing kids back and learning more information about masks and the new strand, I've been told repeatedly by the physicians I've been in contact with is minimum of three layers of masking, double masking if you can. I just think it would be helpful for us to have the best information possible to educate our community, including teachers and kids. Because no, I don't want to give the perception of having a single or a double layer of cloth mask is as effective or is good enough. Because I think I really do worry about some weak masks that are in double layers. So I think just again, educating the community on that would be important. And to get a larger body of research and understanding about masks and their efficacy and the layers, because we're seeing so much more now than we did, you know, a month ago.
And as I shared, it is definitely, we have requirements to follow guidelines that are put out by the state. And they have their experts, their epidemiologists, their medical experts in guiding us in that direction. And although decisions are made locally, so there's nothing that would prevent us from even being, have even stricter guidelines, we're definitely going to want to make sure that we continue to work in consultation with those guidelines in our health department. They've been very effective with leading us throughout this pandemic.
Just one more thing I wanted to add on that is another parent in our district that works for the University of Michigan. She's a writer for the, for their Michigan Health. She just published an article on the 21st of January on how to make the most of masks. There's 11 ways to do it, and she really goes into great detail about this process. So it might be something to be useful, Ms. Merritt, to be shared out to our school community on how to take best advantage of masks.
You definitely share that with me. We can put all, all information that we have on our toolbox as we continue to try to educate each other and bring our community along.
Absolutely.
Thanks, yes, that was a great article that was shared on social media. Thank you to that parent. So my follow-up question to that is with regard to ongoing gentle reminders for students and staff, because we are just starting. And I think it's always helpful to have those gentle reminders, whether they're verbal, whether they're through email or signage. What is the district doing to share the constant reminders about proper mask-wearing and distancing? Are there, is there signage throughout the building that helps kids identify, you know, distancing? Is there signage around the building about proper mask-wearing? Because again, I think people just need gentle reminders. I think everybody's doing the best that they can. And these are the little reminders that would just go a little bit extra with regard to how we're implementing our in-person learning.
So I'll start off, and I see that Mr. Brandon turned his camera on, so he may have things to add. But we put a real big effort into signage. That was early on before we had any students back in the building. So we have signs on the walls, signs on the floor for proper spacing, reminders. As I shared even my visit today at West, Mr. Smiley talked about, you know, they go over all of these reminders and he kind of shared, this is going to be the nature of this week. You're going to hear it all day, you're going to hear it within your classrooms because it truly is that education. And so we have our nurses that are creating videos for our families that we pushed out early. So it's just a collective effort from all, from our teachers within their classrooms, reminding students and teaching students, from our building administrators, from our communications departments, from signs across the building, just continuing the collective effort of students get into the routine. And I will say, I'm really, really proud of our students because I think that throughout this pandemic, they're practicing these mitigation strategies outside of school. They're happy to be back and eager to be back, those that are here with us and choosing this option. And they're really working to be compliant. But everybody needs reminders, people make mistakes every single day. And so we want to continue to make sure that we're communicating what's appropriate. Mr. Brandon, is there anything to add?
I think you captured that very well. The signage in terms of distancing is something that's very impressive. And it's been in our buildings really since the beginning of our mitigation plans. And even just today, you could see at some of our schools, staff leading the way and following that signage that's on our floors. That really does create that separation as students travel between classrooms. And that's been a real enhancement. And then there is other signage around the buildings about mask-wearing and other distancing reminders as well. So we'll continue to reinforce that. We also have some visuals just with our mitigation plan, really spelled out top to bottom, that we'll be displaying around the buildings as well. So I think we're in a pretty strong position of signage for sure.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
Yep, thank you. First and foremost, congratulations on, you know, on today and, you know, getting the plan in place and then starting to implement it, you know, that's exciting. So this is, I don't know if there's so much of a question as a, I'd like to put a request out and specifically to trustee, keyhole, the subcommittee that you're helping to lead up around metrics. So one of the things, and I agree with Superintendent Merritt, that this is agile, right? You know, these are benchmarks of what we're trying to do, and so much is happening so quickly. The variant, as you know, Anupam mentioned, you know, two weeks ago, we weren't talking about it as much as we are today. And so with that in mind, I think the slide that you shared with the different sources that you're benchmarking off of to stay informed on COVID is solid. I think those are the right ones. The thing I would request, I'm putting it out there as a request, is more community voice. So ultimately, if one, we could get community voice, because we have to get that real time as well, to really hear what the community is doing. And so my request is to put a system in place to get community voice from parents, students, and educators. And then I'd like the district to follow a best practice of using a third party to be able to do that. And I think that also falls in line from a capacity issue and allowing them to move quickly. And then also, if we could do that by, before we go to the next phase, so I kind of look at that timeline in phases. The first phase is hybrid, returning the kids to hybrid. And then February 17th, we move into full face-to-face. And so if we could get that data before we return the kids to hybrid, I mean, to full face-to-face on the 17th, perhaps by February 9th, which is already a scheduled board meeting, or to your point, Superintendent Merritt, you know, perhaps a special meeting. But I think that, along with the other data that you mentioned from those other sources, I think that combination is going to be critical before we take that next step to send the kids back to face-to-face. We want to make sure the students are comfortable, the parents are comfortable, and the educators are comfortable. We have to do temperature checks, so I will put that out there as a request.
Thank you, I think that that is something that we can take back for sure, discuss, talk to maybe even our building, our learning design teams. Those were intentionally established to have all representation, including a parent input and student input at times. And I know I've heard feedback from maybe some schools that they haven't had that opportunity to have that parent voice. So we do want to make sure that we are engaging those in a meaningful way that allows more opportunity for input and two-way communication about the implementation of the plan. So we'll talk about that idea to see how that, how to even better get more information from our key stakeholders. Appreciate that.
And I think, am I right, according to our procedures or bylaws, I need a second board member to request it as well in order to take action? Am I right on that, or?
Yeah, before we try to get the administration doing a lot of work that they currently don't have, generally speaking, we've made sure it's a request of the board and not just an individual member. I would like to see that also, and I don't want to put words into your mouth. But I'm wondering if what you're looking for is feedback from a larger portion of the community and not just the ones that are being captured by the buildings?
Correct, yeah, and you know, once again, there's two or three parts to that. You know, one is the stakeholders that we want to capture, you know, the students, the parents, the educators. The second part, which is super important, is just the best practice around using a third party. Because once again, that also gives everyone comfort, it makes everyone comfortable in sharing the information, which I think is really important. And also it gives the district additional capacity. And then just the timing, just making sure that, you know, we're setting a benchmark of when we want to see that, that data come to the board, which what I'm requesting is before February 17th, before we go back full face-to-face, full-time.
So give us, I hear we to request, to give us some time to talk with our team about the logistics of, you know, we're talking about a survey. We already have K-12 insight and we work with that helps us survey and looking at that timeline. So I understand what I, what I hear you requesting. And I think that we could talk about what we can execute in this time period and then a long-term. So really a short-term mechanism to gain some feedback and long-term as well is what we'll look to and report back on. I do also want to clarify something I heard you say, trustee Wilson. I think when you were referencing temperature check, you'd like, check the pulse, not literally temperature, right? I just want to clarify.
Should have told my words a little bit better, correct?
Appreciate that, thank you.
Doug, do you have questions?
Yeah, first I'd like to say it was really great seeing all the buses around town, starting back. I, when I drive to work, I drive past the bus depot, so I see a lot of them coming and going. And it was great to see them, especially during elementary school. Next, I had a question or a concern about after March, when we decide to either go hybrid or fully in-person. And I was just wondering if we did go fully in-person that the, we don't violate what we have on for the amount of students in each classroom. I don't know if it's 30 right now or not, but we're just, I just was concerned with how many kids are going to be in each of the classrooms and whether they can be socially distanced properly. And I know we touched on it on a couple of the other questions, but do you have anything to say about that?
Just again, the importance of reduced density and use of mitigation strategies, monitoring, trying to continue to reduce density. If it's the need to hire additional staff, we're prepared to do that. If it's the need to move larger classes into areas that are rooms that could accommodate more spacing. So just looking at multiple areas and working with the building levels to achieve those desired outcomes.
So you're talking about like splitting a class up and making two classes?
Yeah, so we're looking, for example, you know, as I said, we're at the elementary level. We really kind of finalized, there are a few classes that might right now at 30 and in that actual configuration within that building, their classroom is so small that it could warrant, let's bring in a third teacher and we can have three sections of 20. So just looking at any method that we can do to further reduce density and keep our students safe. And I know that that, like ideally, you want to try to not be as disruptive with the environment. You know, the classrooms have been established, so we're looking at furniture, looking at different places. But at the same time, to keep students safe, especially as things change, if we need to change and add some additional staff, then that would be a direction that we would want to move forward with.
Great, that was, that's the answer I was looking for, thanks.
So thank you for that presentation. The questions I had written down really have been covered. I just wanted to make sure that there have been, to follow up on the vaccine discussion that was earlier. Just so the community understands that while the majority of the staff is willing to be vaccinated and are looking forward to it, the district cannot mandate that because at this time, the vaccine is, has an emergency approval. And so that could never be, at this point, mandated for anybody, just so everybody is aware of that. And that is really all I had, and thank you for this update. And I am looking forward to the next update when you've had a little more time with the children in the schools. I know this is like a first day of school for many of the children, and that's always a hectic day for all of them. Lauren, do you have any more questions? Patrick?
Yeah, just one more to follow up is, on the lunch process, one of the guidelines that we hear again and again and again is taking advantage of outdoor spaces. And I noticed that the kids in my neighborhood, they eat lunch, they've been eating out lunch outside during their high school lunchtime since September. Even today, they're outside my window eating lunch. So they're, throughout the winter, they do this. Now they're in a covered space. I know that we discussed to the district design, learn, I'm sorry, learning design teams about tents or other things that we could do to create outdoor spaces that would better support the exchange of ventilation and fresh air, especially in those unmasked scenarios. We look at the restaurants in our community, and they've been able to, in some cases, stay open because they were able to provide that outdoor dining. I look at what Northville did, and they opened up specifically processes for that. Is that something that we're moving forward with? Is that something we can move forward with, and how quickly can we do that?
So absolutely, nothing is off the table. And what we've kind of shared with the buildings is tell us what you need. So if we need to, I think Tim is looking into those agglues or, you know, ways to create those spaces. So if that is something that is appealing, then we're willing to do the work. So once again, just looking at the teams, looking at their staff, coming up with their plan, and no possibility is off the table in terms of indoor and outdoor spaces that could achieve. I think especially with our high school students at the park, I think many would value an outside type of eating experience, as you shared. So those are definitely under consideration and doing the work to see what it would take to get our supply, how long, if we're looking for some places to have covered eating spaces outside.
Okay, thank you. I mean, obviously you can't put an indoor space outside, that defeats the purpose. But if you have a large, open space with perhaps a sidewall protecting against the harsh winds, you still get the benefits of the ventilation and you can get the ability to have additional spacing as well as that ventilation.
Yes. Anupam? Thanks, and I just want to share, my son was able to go back today for ninth grade and had a good day. So as trustee Wilson said, you know, this is a good day. We need to celebrate the little milestones that we do have. And I know lots of parents, including myself, you know, we send our babies out with our full heart. And, you know, sometimes there's tears and good, you know, good and bad tears for various reasons. But we are in a very, you know, stressful, anxiety-filled situation. So whatever we can do to ease that with parents, I would welcome. And, you know, trustee Wilson also brought up a lot of good points about community involvement and, you know, bringing the community along, which is something, you know, I talked about last time. With regard to getting more community buy-in and the community members that we do have, is there a way to bring along some parent ambassadors that can help us with some of the communication? Because I think if we can get them to create or even synthesize a message that the district has created, then have them be part of the delivery method. Again, utilizing multiple modalities, you know, Facebook posts or websites or letters or text messages, whatever. I'm just wondering, how can we bring, get the community involved in just the messaging? Because if they get it, then they can help other parents get it. Because I think sometimes, we've talked about this before, we're all planning, we are in the midst of these details, they're going through our heads, we kind of get it. But having someone else talk about a plan and saying, yep, this is clear. I think this is how we should move it forward, and I'm willing to be part of that parent ambassador group that can help with that communication. So wondering, what are your thoughts about parent ambassadors?
I love the idea. What I would say, I know we have the district leadership design meeting tomorrow, so maybe we can talk in more detail about some ideas. We definitely want to get, as we bring our community along with active communication and key messages, it's going to be so key, especially as we navigate, the, continue to navigate the pandemic now that we're in person as well. And so making sure plans are finalized, communicate it clearly, and have ambassadors to help with those same key messages. I do want to be mindful of tonight, I know we have a school improvement presentation. So I think tomorrow might be a great idea to continue to flesh out some of these ideas we're hearing and welcome an opportunity to really communicate and help have people share that same message is, I think, very important and a great, great feedback.
Sounds good, thank you. Sean?
No further questions.
Doug?
Yeah, I was just wondering if uh, on the, letting the um, parents know, especially the parents that really wanted us to go back right away, um, put the, put their children back in, in-person learning, whether the possibility that they could be um, um, more helpful in uh, getting the word out. That's a, that's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, so uh, we are done with this. Thank you so very much, Ms. Merritt. And I think we can move on. Uh, just for the community, we will be voting on this after citizens comment. So we are on to teaching and learning with Ms. Rail.
Thank you, President McQuaid. Uh, it's my pleasure to introduce Hal Heard, Director of High School Education, who's going to share with us um, our building, our school improvement highlights.
Thank you, Mrs. Rail. Good evening. Tonight, we will hear the school improvement highlights from one of the four, one of our four high schools. We have to, with us tonight, Principal Kim Villa Rosa of Salem High School. I will now turn it over to Ms. Villa Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Heard, Ms. Rail, Ms. Merritt, and the entire school board for giving me the opportunity to meet with you and present to you um, this evening. I'll get started with our why, and this, this is something that, you know, regardless of which of the four principals was here was talking to you um, today, they would say that we focus on our district Michigan, mission statement. Uh, Plymouth Canton Community Schools will develop capable, involve citizens who recognize that they are citizens of the world, use critical thinking skills, and are lifelong learners. Our vision statement um, says that we will deliver innovative educational experience which propels each student to excellence. I'm not sure any of us imagined a year ago just how innovative we could be in such a short period of time when it came to providing educational opportunities for students. Our school improvement goals at Salem High School are that we will increase our proficiency in social studies, math, English language arts, and science. In addition, the Salem staff will collaborate to create and implement structures that support the academic and social emotional development of all students and improve the culture and climate in the building. At the beginning of our last school year, so nineteen twenty, um, when we, we never imagined we were going to have our school year cut short, um, the principals decided to focus on student agency, relationships and student connectiveness, and social emotional learning and support. Um, because the school year was cut short, we decided that we are going to continue to focus on those areas for this school year. In keeping with that focus, um, we, I, I have a picture there, and that was a pep rally that we held uh, at the beginning of last school year. This speaks to both student agency and relationships and connectedness. This pep rally was planned and organized by our students. It was run by our students. In addition, something real recently that was planned and run and organized by our students would be the walk in the park that we did for our ninth grade students just last Saturday. Focusing on social emotional learning and support, we've had the opportunity to do that every Wednesday during the school year. I want to talk to you a little bit about our Salem Learning Design Team. We developed this to get feedback from the teachers and employees in our building, as well as our students and parents. Um, we wanted to create in doing this, the smoothest possible transition for our students, once they were, once they were back to in-person learning. I cannot tell you how thrilling it was to have our first day of in-person instruction in such a very long time. Um, with the, the staff was excited, our students were excited. I asked a teacher how they were doing, and she honestly said to me, this is one of the best days ever, and I really mean that. Um, so it, it really was a great thing, and I think it's gone very well, and I'm encouraged about moving forward with um, bringing next groups of students in. One of the things that we focused on for the safety of kids is looking at directions for hallways and stairwells. I have a link to some, a couple pictures about what we did, just so you can get an idea of how that looked. We started by doing, using maps to figure out, you know, we drew maps. How, what direction can we get students to go in? And we um, we created maps. Okay, here you go. You can see on the left um, of that picture, those are the piles and piles of maps that we created and laminated to be hung and posted on walls. If you look at the middle slide at the top, you can see a one-way sign. Those are throughout all three floors. Every, um, so Salem's kind of set up like three squares on top of each other. So every single hallway has one direction. At the ceiling, we have one-way signs. If you looked at it from the opposite, what's printed on it is wrong way. If you look at the floor, you can see the circles provided by the district that allow us to put arrows down and space out, so kids get an idea of what social distancing really looks like. On, on the far right, you can see we have on doors everywhere, either enter only or exit only, if that's appropriate. And then below that, down only or up only, we created um, paths for our stairwells. So for example, if you're in one of our towers, everybody is either going up or everybody's coming down. They're not passing each other in the stairwell like we would have done um, in, you know, in times before this. So that was part of it. The other thing we worked hard on is protocol for the cafeteria. That was a particular concern from everybody in our learning design team. So what, what does the cafeteria look like to keep people safe? Because we know if you're going to eat, you have to have your mask off. And so how do we keep that safe? So what we did is we went through and marked off our seats in the cafeteria. So an X indicates that somewhere you can sit. Then we skip several seats, and then there's another X and so on and so forth. If you picture, if you've ever been in Salem's cafeteria, our tables are really, really long. And basically to social, social distance everybody, we are not sitting more than six kids at each of those tables right now. We also explain to them clearly, the protocol is, you know, you can, you can't take your mask off till you sit down. You need, you can sit down, you can take your mask off to eat and drink. You need to put it back on before you get up and you throw garbage away or anything else. Um, if you're not eating, you need to keep your mask on. We also, the, the cafeteria, um, the cafeteria support has been wonderful in terms of helping us designate where kids stand in line, how to social distance while they are in line, and to just get grab and go, so it doesn't hold up the lines. Um, we did walk the park last Saturday. I explained to the groups of students, we had four different groups of students throughout the day. I briefly explained to students our expectations in terms of safety. And I guess my, my bigger message to them even than that was that we know that you're coming in as a ninth grader, and you probably weren't in school since eighth grade. And there's a lot of growing that goes between middle of eighth grade and beginning of ninth grade in terms of school and expectations and the things that we're able to provide at the high school by doing visits to the middle school and having them come and visit us, and wanting them to know that we all recognize that they didn't have that opportunity. And we really were here to support them as they transitioned to high school. The administrators created a video. I'm not going to show this to you right now because nobody has this much time. The video was about an hour and twenty, or an hour, I'm sorry, about ten minutes and um, twenty-two seconds. So it's too long to show you here, but I did provide a link. So if you're interested in seeing basically what it was, was myself and the other administrators at Salem. And we wanted to welcome the students, let them see who we were, talk about protocols for the building that might be different than what they were used to, let us know how to find us if they need help, and just welcome them on the first day. So that was shown in all the teachers' classrooms this morning, first hour. It will be shown again on Thursday for the next cohort that's coming in. So I debated if I was going to share this slide, and the reason for my debate is that all of our teachers are doing really amazing, amazing things, and they're putting forth tremendous effort to do what's best for students. Uh, we don't have time for me to share what each individual student is doing that's positive. Um, I can tell you, there's more things than I can mention. So I just picked a few to highlight and give you an example. Um, overall, we've seen great breakout opportunities for students, modified engagement strategies, checks for understanding, some really creative, different ways to assess students. And it, the first picture I have, or the picture that I have here is Chris Florkowski. He is a fairly new math teacher. Chris, um, we think has a second uh, career ahead of him as an air traffic controller. He brought all of this technology in from his home. And if you go by his room any day, anytime, you can see on the whiteboard, he's projecting so he can see physically all the kids in front of him like they were, you know, physically there, assuming they're going to turn on his, their cameras. And then he has a computer so he can monitor what they're doing. He has a computer so that they can see what he's doing. And he has another computer so that he can monitor the chat. And so he's really taken virtually learning um, as seriously and as he can to make it as, as positive as possible for students. Um, many of you know that Diana Woodward runs our culinary and CTE program. She is award-winning, and I can tell you, she was really, really nervous about how in the world do I teach what I would usually teach in a kitchen when I don't have children in front of me. She went to such amazing lengths to do, make this work. If you were to go see her, you would see her zooming with cameras everywhere, demonstrating for kids just like she was teaching, like the best cooking show you've ever seen. And then what she does is each week she has a plan for the students and what they're going to cook and what they're going to learn. She solicits, she gives them, okay, here you need flour, you need sugar, you need yeast, you need a frying pan, whatever it is. Kids, give her feedback. This is what I have in my house, this is what I don't. She makes up baskets for them and has them either picked up by them or their parents, or she physically delivers them to their house so that they can cook along with her while she's instructing them. Lauren Cummings is one of our English teachers. Lauren Cummings uh, was so just bothered by students that didn't participate because they could do credit or no credit, that she solicited local businesses to donate gift certificates for gift cards for any student that would continue to participate through the end of the school year. She continued to do that to reward them all through the semester. Um, another cool thing, I went around all, all day yesterday to make sure that everybody had enough seats, that everybody had enough space to social distance. We didn't need to take any um, furniture out of the room to social distance. And I went in to see Lauren's room set up and saw the, just the coolest thing. She took the time, and I don't know if we can see that picture or not, but she took the time to not only social distance everybody, but each and every chair that she wants students to sit in, she had written their name in calligraphy, coded by hour, laminated it, and put it on the spot that she designated that those specific students were to seat. So the minute they came in, they knew exactly where to sit, what the expectation was, and I think it was a pretty cool welcoming thing to do as well. Um, Sean Jackman and Kelly Osborne are teachers in our, um, well, our Arts Academy, um, also Sean's an IB teacher. I've seen them do incredible things to make things as realistic for students as possible, learning to critique each other um, on their artwork. They are going to continue to do a virtual art show. Normally, we have the art show every year at Plymouth High School. Um, rather than missing out on that, they are creating a virtual art show, so students can display their art to the community. I've seen incredible individualized support for students with IEPs. I've seen observed teachers meeting with students individually via Zoom, um, encouraging students to turn their cameras on. I actually went to observe a teacher the other day, and the kids are regularly zooming in twenty minutes before class starts, just so they can interact and have some, some personal connections. And again, I've seen a lot of our uh, special education teachers do some really good things with the social emotional learning piece. Um, our counseling staff has, they're the ones that are developing the social emotional learning lessons for every Wednesday morning for every teacher at the park. They're continuing Zoom meetings with teachers, or I'm sorry, with students and parents as needed. And they are continuing the um, their trails program, and that's a support group for students. Okay, so another one of the themes, um, or not, one of our, our main themes that we talked about at the park is know my name, know my story. We originally came up with that theme, and again, this is, this is coming back from last year. We originally came up with that theme because we really, really wanted to kid, kids to feel included at school. They want, we wanted them to feel seen. We wanted them to feel heard. We wanted them to know that adults were reaching out to make connections to them, even if they weren't necessarily in their class. Um, even it was just saying hi and knowing the kid's name in the hallway. And um, one of the things that we did at Salem in the springtime is we, all of the staff members that could participate uh, did a video for our seniors, just to let them know that we were thinking about them and, you know, share pictures of us and our cats and dogs and kids or whatever we wanted, our graduation pictures from when we were in seniors to let them know that we saw them and we missed them, and we knew what it was like to be their age. Um, the picture that I have here is hard for me to talk about because I want to talk for a minute about our amazing cafeteria ladies at Salem High School. These ladies, if there is not an example of people that know my name and know my story of students at Salem High School and across the park, I don't know who is. These ladies asked for special permission to have a booth because when we did the senior sundoff, they did not want to miss saying goodbye to their kids. And they care that much. And another great shout out to them because every week from last March, they have been helping put together thousands and thousands of meals for the community and delivering them rain shine with a huge smile on their face. And so they are an example of a great group of people at Salem High School that really take the time to get to know our kids and get to know our story. And so when we talk about our theme, we want that to be not just for the teachers, not just for the administrators or the counselors. We want and appreciate feeling like that. It's a whole community effort for our kids. Um, just touching on some additional supports, and again, this is not an all-inclusive list. Um, but we have a clothing bank at Salem High School that is very well-stocked, and we have continued to provide clothing to families anytime we're aware that there's a need. And our volunteers do come in every Wednesday to work on um, sorting clothes and, and getting them ready for anybody that needs them. In addition, um, we've helped out in the building, even when our volunteers weren't there, to try to let families um, get what they need. We were able to have open house and parent teacher conferences virtually. That actually went really well. Um, we have had virtual meetings with our ninth grade students in combination with our Link Crew students. We've been able to continue with clubs and activities virtually and some in-person athletics, as you know. Uh, that's been kind of a start and stop thing and up and down, but we're continuing to try to get our kids involved as much as we possibly can. Our student advisory council, we, I, I do meet with uh, students just to kind of ask their opinion as we're going along. We have students as part of our, of our learning design team, but then separate from But then separate from that, I still am interested in meeting with our students virtually. And hopefully we can start meeting in person, which would be really nice. We have continued our virtual math lab. And in continuing that, basically what the math teachers, we have a teachers assigned to that and that kids can go to during lunch and we, each teacher has a link math teacher on their Canvas page so that students can join that virtually. So for overall, you know, when we look at constantly improving and constantly looking at, especially in this really challenging time, what can we do better? What can we do to make adjustments and, and try to reach our students? And so we've been doing that, continuing to do that through virtual building level, staff meetings, virtual department meetings, our virtual PLCs. We're still continuing to examine our data to see how our students are doing. And the learning management system that we adopted, which is Canvas, has helped with that quite a bit. It's helped with, you know, providing one common platform for students. And again, we do our social emotional, emotional learning lesson plans every Wednesday. And we're continuing with that. One example of looking at our data and our improvement focus is looking at how our students were, have been performing and trying to contact families with our Dean Counselors Assistant Principals to offer support. And in rare situations where we couldn't reach a family by phone or email, we have made home visits to offer support to them. And last but not least, I want to show you some pictures on the last slide of our Salem High School class of 2020 graduation. I bring this up for two reasons. First of all, I just want to acknowledge these kids. They did not have a great end to their school year. We did the best we could to provide them with a graduation opportunity. But I also bring this up because this is something that I remind my administrative team of often, and I remind myself of often. Everything we've done in the last year has pretty much been something we never did before. We never had, we never, none of us ever did a drive through graduation ceremony. None of us ever did drive through book return drop off, senior send off, whatever the case may be. But this reminds me that just because we've never done it before, doesn't mean we can't do it well. And we can't learn from it and we can't keep getting better. And so at every obstacle we have, I keep trying to remind myself, just because we haven't done it before, doesn't mean we can't do it and do a good job for our students. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. It's been a pleasure. I'm more than willing and ready to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you so very much. Lauren, you are up first.
Just want to say thank you so much for the wonderful uplifting presentation. I think it's, it's just really incredible, all of the positive highlights that you were able to touch on that are happening at Salem. And I don't know, it just, it just gives you the warm fuzzies when we're, you know, challenged with all this other stuff that's going on. So I just really appreciate, you know, highlighting the positive things that are happening with our staff and our students for our community to see. I just have one question for you. You know, you hit on it on a couple of slides, specific to the social emotional learning. I think that's so important. I think it's really great that, you know, our high schools are focusing on this. You know, I have elementary students, I know that's a focus for them as well. But I just wanted to ask you if you could expand on some of the examples of this social, social emotional learning that's happening on Wednesdays, I believe you've mentioned.
So the counselors do, they do lessons that they share with the teachers, that they do with their students. And I have not, I can't remember all of them. I can tell you some of them that I've observed personally. One was about, you know, one was about mindfulness. There was one that I saw a teacher lead where they talked about making the best in a difficult situation. And she did a really nice job of saying, you know, sometimes it's hard, you're sick or your family's sick. Or you think what could possibly be positive about what I'm going through? And she gave a personal example. And then she had the kids either turn on their mic or in chat, say like, can you share something? Or even if you can't think of something right now, what is an example of how you could turn something into, flip something and look at it and learn something from it? So that was one of them. Another one, they did, I can't remember the name of it, but they talked about the importance of physical activity and encouraged, they did, they had like a short little video and encouraged all the kids to physically get up and be active and about how that really helps your mind. So the teachers actually got up and did exercises with the kids. And, and one of the teachers that I was watching, she's actually decided to do that in the beginning of each of her classes, just because it's so easy in the time we're in right now to sit in one place and not really get active. And they talked about how that helps you with your learning and keeps you, you know, awake and alert and that kind of thing. So it's, it's a lot of different things, but I think they try to, you know, find different ways to appeal to everybody and give them a wide variety of experiences.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Patrick.
Great presentation. It's really always fantastic to hear our educators and staff that have gone, gone above and beyond in supporting the students. My question, I have two questions. One is, do all those programs that you've described, do they apply to our Virtual Academy? I know that they, I believe that they still report into the same high schools, correct?
They do. So like, they're all connected to our Assistant Principals and our counselors. So where I might, I might have a virtual question that maybe I, I'm not 100% sure on, then I connect with somebody in the Virtual Academy who can help. So the students still have access, they still have access to doing virtual appointments with their counselors. Counselors are still the ones that are making schedule changes and selecting their classes. And so we've still kept them very, and they're still assigned, even though they might be on the Virtual Academy track. My Salem kids are still my Salem kids, if that makes sense.
Gotcha, gotcha. And so like those SCL programs, those things apply not only to our Safe Start students, but also to the, the Virtual Academy students?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. And then the second question I had is really about the impact of COVID. And we've heard, we've heard mixed stories. We've heard some that, some students that have done really well and some students that have really struggled. As you look at the data, what are we seeing? Are we seeing a decreased performance in grades or in, in test scores? And what, what can we do to help those, those kids?
Well, you know, I'd like to see the data just as soon as all, for Semester One, as soon as all of our grades are posted. I think that'll be really important. But I would say at the, at the first quarter-ish mark, myself and some of the other principals were seeing some things that we were worried. We were hearing from teachers, maybe everybody wasn't, you know, logging on virtually or they weren't, didn't seem to be as engaged or they were having struggles getting them to turn in assignments and things like that. We really tried to work in our staff meetings and with professional development to talk to our teachers about how this is really challenging for kids. And this is, we're asking them to do something we've, they've never been expected to do before. And we don't know what supports they have at home. Where normally, you know, the counselor would go ask the kid to step out of the classroom and bring them to their office and talk. But then they're trying to contact that family and the kid doesn't want to talk to them. And it's, you know, so it's different. But we have felt like after, like after we kind of got through first quarter and really had the opportunity to talk to the teachers and reach out to a lot of the kids and the families and make phone calls and say, hey, you know, some of them were just like, do you need support that you're not getting? You know, is it, are you trying to share one electronic device or, you know, who knows what it is? So that seemed to get better. And I also feel like the teachers really worked hard to reach out to their kids and give them, you know, extend deadlines and, and encourage participation and things like that. But I do think COVID, you know, I think there's going to be some things that we might find as kids come in, back in that we didn't even know. There's kids that are dealing with some things with their family situation or somebody that, that was very sick from COVID or they're very afraid somebody in their family is going to get it. Things of that nature that maybe we're not even sure of yet. And we might start to see more of that when kids return and, and are more open with us.
Okay. Well, thank you for the sensitivity and, and the hard work there. I hope as we get some more data on this, we can help to prepare for additional supports that we might need to provide the second semester or things that we might do over the summer or perhaps next year.
Totally agree. Like if there's anything we need to do to try to catch some kids up from where things might be a little bit lagging.
Great. Thanks. Great presentation.
Thanks.
Anupam.
Thank you. Yes, I want to echo what's already been said with regard to this being a great presentation. Thank you for highlighting the great work that the teachers and your lunch staff are doing. And they do it with such grace and humility. It's been amazing to see all of that and in all the buildings. I mean, the cafeteria staff have been amazing in every, every building. So kudos to them. With the messaging that you talked about, know my name, know my story is beautiful. I love that. Is that something that's, I think, across the park?
It is, it is.
So thank you for highlighting that. And with, I only have one question, which is the virtual math lab, is that also something that is across the park or is that a Salem?
Absolutely. And we actually have teachers, like each teacher, we've got different teachers that, that are, because that do math lab. So typically in a regular school year, you'd have a teacher per lunch period. And so now we, we have more than one teacher available so that kids are, are able to work with them. And you know, some kids get, they get kind of attached to certain teachers that like to work with them. So providing more than one, I think is helpful.
Okay, thanks. So I want to say thank you for ending with that beautiful picture of the graduates because that is one of the moments that board members look forward to, we just watching the kids graduate. And typically we've had the tradition of going to Eastern Michigan University. And I love what you just said with regard to, just because it's different, doesn't mean that we can't do it well. And I want to say that was beautifully done. Patty and I had the privilege of doing Salem together.
I remember. Thank you.
It was beautiful. And I saw the joy and I saw the laughter, I saw the tears, which are all the great emotions that you see at graduation. But you got to see them close up. And so I think there was so much beauty in that event. And I'm so glad that you ended your slide deck with that and the story of how we're doing great things even in the midst of this pandemic. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
John.
Just, just echoing, echoing what everyone else said, you know, thank you for sharing and, you know, really highlighting the innovation that's, that's taking place because that's so important. And, you know, it speaks to the resiliency of the, of the staff and the teachers and the educators to be able to, you know, find those innovative approaches. I wish you would have zoomed in a little bit more on the air traffic controller. I wanted to see. He has set up, but my only question is just piggybacking on something you said, you know, we don't even know what we don't know at this point around social and emotional needs of our students as they do come back. You know, what can we do as a district to get ahead of that? You know, what else can we be doing? What else can we invest in now that's going to help them as we return them to face to face full time? And, and just down the road, you know, I mean, as, you know, the, the timeline we share, that's kind of the immediate timeline. But there's a, you know, a longer timeline that we have to be concerned with. So what else can we provide as a district to, to you to help support that?
I think it'll be important for me to work with Mr. Hurd and the principals and the other high schools to try to, as well as our counselors, so social workers and psychologists, to really try to brainstorm. What's the best way to approach this? And do we, do we need more assistance in the area of social emotional support? I mean, whether that be staff or we need some more professional development around it. Do we need ways, different ways to reach out to kids and families to find out what they need? Because that has been a challenge. Some families are very forthcoming right now and some are just, they're not in a place that they even know what they need, you know? So I think that us working together with our Director of High Schools, Mr. Hurd, and really trying to see what can we do moving forward to be as supportive as possible.
Doug, do you have some questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Ms. Villa Rosa for the presentation. That was a really great one. I discovered a lot of things that I didn't know about, especially like the culinary arts. That was, it's a great thing that the teacher is doing with video and that. So hopefully when we get back to person to person, it'll even go better. But that's all I wanted to say. I just, I would like the presentation a lot.
Thank you. And I will say she was one of the specialized classes. So this kid, these kids were back today for the first time in months and months. And I looked in that kitchen and they were doing great things.
Well, there's a lot of YouTube videos on that type of subject, culinary arts. So it could be used in the future.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. That was lovely. I was not surprised that your staff is doing such wonderful things. My children graduated from Salem and had awesome teachers. Of course, they went across the park, you know, to the different schools, but all the teachers were just absolutely awesome. And as Anupam said, we did do the graduation at Salem. And what I noticed about it, it was more personal than in the past. Because usually it is, you know, you have the card, they read the card. You get your diploma, back to your, back to your seat. And you know, you're up in the balcony and you're like, is that, oh, trying to figure out where your child is. So you get that, you know, try to get a picture. And this way the parents could be right up close and get those pictures that were even, you know. So I felt like in a lot of ways, it was a more personal event than generally speaking, we have at graduation since, you know. If people are watching this and are unaware, all three ceremonies are held in one day. So they're 11 to five. And, you know, they move those kids through in a little bit over an hour. So spending several hours doing each graduation this year, I felt like it was more personal. And they also could get their diplomas at the same time. So that when they left, they had everything with them. And that was, I thought that was a really nice feature of this year that the children, when they went home, they actually had the diploma, not just a cover. So thank you so very much for that. Thank your staff for all of their hard work.
I will, Patty. And I think we've learned a lot from some of the things we've done, like graduation. Like there are definitely positive takeaways that no matter what graduation looks like this year, we can learn from that we can do maybe a little bit differently. Lenny, I agree, that diploma thing was a big deal for us. That seems like a good thing for kids.
All right, I think we are done with that section. Thank you so much. And we are now on to finance and operations with Ms. Piaz.
Good evening, Board of Education. This evening we have in front of you the consideration of approval of a resolution for the BAN 2020 Technology Consultant Contract. I believe Mr. Salzer is going to take us through his, his process to date. We also have with us from Barton Mallow, Paul Twig and Brian Jutsey. Mark, did you want to say a few words?
Yes, I hope so.
You're muted. There you go.
We're not hearing you, Mark.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Perfect. All right. I'll get this right at some point, maybe a few meetings down the road. Yeah, so we spent a lot of time and connected with a number of different possible partners before we developed and, and just made a decision to bring in Barton Mallow as a recommendation. The team is here tonight, but just to share that there was interviews with a number of- The team is here tonight, but just to share that there was interviews with a number of other consultant groups, and we had multiple meetings to try to make a, make sure that we had the right fit. And we have the right fit. So I'm excited to share with you the, the partners that will share how they see the project alignment. And I think we've got Brian Jesse and Paul Twig from Barton Mallow to share tonight with you. So I'll turn that over to those two fellows. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us and for the opportunity to, to be a part of the, the bond program. My name is Brian Jesse. Also online, as mentioned, is Paul Twig. But I, I have worked with Barton Mallow for, I'm sorry, for, I've worked with Barton Mallow for, for 10 years. I worked on the previous 2016 bond issue where we did infrastructure work for the middle school additions, and then also did the infrastructure and classroom AV work at the new Liberty Middle School at that time. Also, just to mention, my, my wife graduated from Salem High School and my sister-in-law currently is attending one of the high schools there at the park. And my, so my in-laws still live in the district in Cherry Hill Village. So just wanted to throw that in there. But I'll let Paul introduce himself as well.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Paul Twig, and I started our technology design group in the mid 90s. Interestingly, it was Plymouth Canton who launched us. So you asked us for some help with your 1992 bond, you and one other district. And shortly after that, we formalized our group, and we've been helping school districts with technology bonds ever since. We have a well-rounded team that we think is going to serve not only from the, from a technology portion of helping out with the architects, but you know, hopefully will be a good resource for Mark, for Debbie, and the rest of your administration as well. So I'm gonna let Brian introduce the rest of the team and talk a little bit about our approach.
So, so Paul's there on the, on the slide on the top left, on the top center. To the top right there is Chris Musser. Chris is a design specialist who works with us. He's been with Barton Mallow roughly five years, and he came to us with specialties in physical security, like access control and video security. And he previously worked for actually a security integrator on the west side of the state. So he's got a lot of experience there. And the bottom left there is Jeff Zaluka. Jeff was a recent hire to Barton Mallow. But he's been in the technology and particularly audiovisual side of things as an integrator for 20 plus years. So a great asset to the team there as far as audiovisual design. The bottom center is Lindsay Johnson Lemieux. She's listed as the, the teaching and learning specialist. So along with her design, design side of things, she also offers offers an additional service to our customers by supplementing training and helping teachers learn to leverage all the technology and software tools they have at their disposal in an efficient and effective way. She's a Google certified trainer and has presented at the My Google Conference as well as Google Fest in the past. Bottom right there is Ariseli Pampa. She is our accounting support. She helps all of our technology projects, helps work with contractor billings and, and helping us, you know, assemble invoices and work on backend processing stuff for our projects. So this is further detailed in our proposal, but I just wanted to highlight a few points on this slide. Our tech, our technology design group has worked with over, in over 60, 60 districts throughout the state. And 40 of those are repeat clients. We've been providing technology services for over 28 years, as Paul mentioned. You know, formalizing in the mid 90s and and we collaborated on over, the last point there at the top is we've collaborated on over 25 projects with TMP and McCarthy Smith in the past. A majority of that experience is with TMP, though. On the next slide, there is, is a couple of things about the, the project approach. So here's a a stab at the schedule. So what I've tried to do is take, is take the technology items that kind of stand alone. So it's a two-pronged approach. So the technology items listed at the top are kind of understood to be kind of independent projects that stand alone aside the construction projects. So these are things like the district-wide wireless systems and network refresh and, and things like the, the system, like head-end equipment that ends up at, at one of the, at one of the buildings. There are also like projector refresh things that, that affect all the classrooms at the buildings and not just, not just the buildings where there's additions or, or heavy renovations in the project. So in the bottom section there is the construction schedule. So this is again, where it's a consolidated version of McCarthy Smith and TMP's projected schedule. And basically, it's just kind of showing where we think our design timeline will be and, and the construction timeline to work alongside those, those partners. So we'll be obviously involved with a lot of design coordination meetings with, with TMP, and then also coordinating things in the field with, with McCarthy Smith. Before I say thank you, the last other thing I wanted to bring up is that we'll of course be coordinating with your facilities and technology departments and meeting all, all the stakeholders throughout the program to ensure the, the projects are implemented as, as seamlessly as possible. So with that, I will open it up for questions and just say thank you again for the opportunity.
All right, Lauren.
Thank you for the presentation. I, you know, I'm a committee member on the Finance and Operations Meeting, our committee, excuse me. So I have had the opportunity to see this presentation. And so my questions have been answered already. I guess I'll just make a general comment. One, one question I did have at our, our past meeting was just about the overlap of, of the technology design with the architectural projects. As we know, as Patrick had just mentioned in the update, that, you know, there's a EL1 is out to bid right now, and we're gonna, you know, get those, those numbers back in the near future. And, and my question in the, in the committee meeting was, you know, how, how do we plan to sort of overlay or coordinate technology in, in something that's already out on the street? And I think, you know, everybody had a really good answer. It was just basically that, you know, TMB has built in some assumptions for technology, and there's still that ability to adjust. So I just wanted to share that out with the group from our last meeting. So no, no further questions, more comment, though. Thank you.
Rick.
Again, great discussion that we have in the FNO Committee. That's why it's the funnest and the most exciting committee that we have. No, the Barton Mallow game and addressed all of our questions. Mark and his team have done a good job of vetting the other bids that we have. We're comfortable with, very comfortable and looking forward to working with Barton Mallow, not only on the specific projects that have been laid out here, but also in some of the innovation work that we might do as part of the bond fund. You know, we all know that as a 10-year bond, there is a lot of potential new technology that we're going to see, and we look forward to the collaboration and how those can be introduced into our classroom. So, thank you.
Anupam.
Thank you. First of all, I will say congratulations on your team. You have a gem with Lindsay Johnson Lemieux. She is a former student of mine when I taught high school mathematics. So it's nice to see her grow into, you know, this great woman that's contributing and doing amazing things. She also worked at Garden City as I was working at recess. I've seen her grow and blossom. So it's nice to see her on your team. My question is more about the innovative technologies, kind of to what Patrick mentioned. How are you keeping up with the innovative technology? So what do you, what are you putting your pulse or, I guess dipping your hands into with regard to what's out there? And trying to stay ahead of all the innovative technologies and to see what would be worthwhile bringing forward and what is maybe not worthwhile?
I can start with that, Brian. And then if you'd like to jump in, you're welcome to. But we've been fortunate to work on some of the more innovative projects throughout the state. The first purpose-built STEM elementary up in Midland that was subsidized by Dow. They, they ended up doing some very creative things and spent two years working with their instructors on how to teach inside the building, as well as the new Bloomfield High School and other projects. And a core piece of all of these is that, you know, it's not as much about the tool necessarily, the technology, as it's about the pedagogy. And it's about how to use technology to help support the learning environment. And so, you know, flexibility, collaboration, getting students to be more hands-on with their learning, you know? You know, you can do all of those wonderful things with some furniture, some technology, and some devices for the students. You know, or it could just end up being something that sits on somebody's desk. So, you know, we're, we're hoping that there's going to be that opportunity to help partner with Mark. And from the things that we've seen and we know from your previous buildings, you know, you are well-renowned for the way that you use technology and the way that you approach learning in your districts. So, you know, I feel that for the most part, you know, we might come up with some, you know, ideas that can help or as well as take the group on some tours of some places that might be doing things slightly different. But, you know, I don't think it's going to end up necessarily being radical change. It's more, a little bit of a progression.
That's great to hear, especially about the pedagogy, because as you mentioned, you could do great things with minimal tools, and you can have a lot of tools that do great things. So pedagogy is so critical in this work. And thank you for putting that at the forefront of what you do. And I also want to emphasize and thank you for bringing this up with regard to you've seen some technology being purchased and it just sits there. So kind of doing this work throughout the county, I've seen lots of districts. I shouldn't say lots. I've seen some districts where great technology is purchased. But because the pedagogy wasn't intricately tied, and the ongoing professional development wasn't there, it just, it didn't get the maximum benefit and potential. So I think with what you're saying, and we have a great team with Mark, Andrew, and others, I'm looking forward to seeing some great things happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn.
Fantastic presentation. No questions at this time. Thank you.
Doug.
Same with me. The questions I had were answered at the last FNO meeting.
Hey, thank you so much. I'm really excited to see, see like the bond works starting. We spent a lot of time trying to get it passed, and it's, it's really exciting to see the things that will happen. And just for the technology and the things that will make our students and our teachers' lives ideally easier, help their achievement, help them to be excited to learn. So that was a great presentation. I know very little about technology. So I was very impressed and I, I was always very impressed by all of it. And so thank you very much. Um, so my understanding was that was a first reading. And that we are not taking a vote on that tonight. So we will go then down to Student Services with Kurt Diskowitz. Did you want to set this up for us, Kurt, or not?
I sure can. As we reviewed last week, or at our last meeting, we are in that timeframe for our annual School of Choice Program. Before you tonight is a resolution for your consideration to offer non-resident School of Choice Program for the 2122 school year. The recommendation is for a minimum of one seat for kindergarten through 10th grade with a maximum of 100 seats, I'm sorry, 250 seats. And once again, we are recommending the 105C School of Choice Option, which allows us to offer the program to families that live within Wayne County and any contiguous county that butts up to Wayne County. As I mentioned, at our last meeting, we are not recommending any changes to the program for the upcoming year.
Just a quick question. Yeah, just a quick question on that, Kurt. You said contiguous county. It's actually contiguous cities, right?
I'm sorry?
You said contiguous counties or contiguous cities?
Counties.
Okay, so anybody in any counties that are, that are connected to Wayne County are eligible?
That's correct. Macomb, Oakland, Washtenaw. I think that's the contiguous ones to Wayne County.
Monroe also, Kurt. Monroe is.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood from previous discussions. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions about this? No? Okay, so I am looking for a motion. Action item 210140, consider approval of a resolution for the enrollment of non-residents, resident applicants for the 2021-2022 school year pursuant to Schools of Choice Section 105 and 105C, final reading.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for the enrollment of non-resident applicants for the 2021-2022 school year pursuant to Schools of Choice Section 105 and 105C, final reading, action item 210140.
Thank you. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Kehoe that we consider approval of a resolution for the enrollment of non-resident applicants the 2021-2022 school year pursuant to Schools of Choice Section 105 and 105C, final reading. Action item is 210140. Will you take us through a roll call vote, please, Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, Brooks, myself, I vote yes. Member Christensen.
You're on mute.
Yes.
Member Kehoe.
Yes.
Member McCoyn.
Yes.
Members Stu.
Yes.
Member Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay, thank you so much. And then the next action item, action item 210141, consider approval of a resolution for the enrollment of non-resident students of PCCS employees for the 2021-2022 school year. Final reading. Is there any discussion on this before we have a motion?
I could share information regarding that. In addition to the School of Choice Resolution, we're also recommending a resolution for your consideration tonight for the enrollment of non-resident students of Plymouth Canton Community School District Employees for the 2122 school year under the provisions under the School, School Aid Act. We've offered the ability for our staff members to bring their children to our district for the, for the last number of years.
All right, so I am looking for a motion.
Madam President.
Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of resolution for the enrollment of non-resident students of PCCS employees for the 2021-2022 school year, final reading, action item 210141.
Okay, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Seadoo that we consider approval of a resolution for the enrollment of non-resident students of PCCS employees for the 2021-2022 school year, final reading, action item is 210141. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Member Brooks, yes. Member Christensen.
Yes.
Yes. Member Kehoe.
Yes.
Member McCoyn.
Yes.
Member Sudu.
Yes.
Member Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay, so now we are on to citizens' comments. As a reminder to the community, we will read one comment per person within three minutes of time. And Mr. Brandon is timing us. Your comment form should have had your first and last name on it and a reasonable email address. So we will be reading them, Patrick, Anupam, Lauren, and then myself, and we will go around until we have read all of the comments.
Our first comment is from Julie Johnson. "Thank you to the Board of Education. I appreciate your service. It's clear that you have the best interests of PCCS students at heart. What is not clear is how the Board approved a plan that never spelled out how lunch with 6,000-plus students at the park would work. In fact, this plan did not spell out how lunch at any of the schools would work once we're back full-time, face-to-face. The reason for this is that schools are going to be coming up with these plans. Shouldn't these plans have been in place before the Board approved the plan? What is also not clear is how the Board approved a plan that allows students to be on a crowded bus closer than three feet apart for longer than 15 minutes. This is a super-spreader event that will have..." This is a super spreader event that will happen several times a day for thousands of PCCS students. Imagine the contact tracing quarantine that will be required when a positive cases occur on the bus. What is also not clear is how the plan was approved with no teacher staff vaccination in place. Teachers and staff are our frontline workers. Isn't it the administration board's job to make sure their work conditions are safe? At this point, there is no plan and instead staff are scrambling to find vaccination appointments. Please implement and communicate these factors clearly to your staff and to the community before considering, before consider a move to full time, face to face model. End of comment.
This next comment is from Doug Johnston. Thank you to the dedicated staff and the board members for your continued service. I sincerely would like to see our children back to school. However, Ms. Merritt and the school board has put us in a place that lacks fundamentals of an execution strategy. There is not a coordinated plan in place to get out, to get our frontline workers, the teachers and staff vaccinated. Stating it is out of control is simply not acceptable. Doing nothing is simply not acceptable. There is a plan in place on how students will eat. I'm sorry, there is not a plan in place on how students will eat lunch six feet apart under the full capacity or hybrid model. There is not a plan in place on how the density during the busing will be reduced as social distance will not be able to be maintained. Wearing a mask and providing sanitizer are not safety protocols if distance and density are not factored in. There is no stated target in place on distance, density and duration for hallway passing. There are no testing plans in place to identify B117 and its increased infection rate. Hoping it doesn't cross Ridge Road is not a strategy. I signed up for Safe Start, Safe Start Learning and without a clearly defined and communicated, communicated execution strategy, we are headed toward the same start, but with a masked learning. Please define and communicate your detailed execution strategy before moving forward with in-person learning for the middle school students and high schools. End of comment.
Okay, this next, can you guys hear me? Okay, good. All right. Um, so this next comment comes from Heather Fitzpatrick. Dear Superintendent Merritt and members of the board, I'm coming to you on behalf of all the over one, or 1,100 teachers and ancillary staff that I serve. The board has voted to return elementary, middle school, ninth graders and specialized course students to a pre-pandemic schedule on, on or about February 17th. We are roughly three weeks away from that date and teachers have shared serious concerns about this timeline. We want to be back with our students, but we want to do it in the safest way possible. At this time, specific details surrounding the return have not been shared with teachers. There is a fear that the district is rushing to the full return without specific details that will keep our teachers and students safe. What will lunch look like? How do we ensure physical distancing? Will plexiglass barriers be available for all rooms where we cannot ensure proper distancing with class sizes over 35? What will specials look like at the elementary level? How do we support quarantine students? What will the daily schedule look like when high school returns to a seven, 10 start? Details matter. We need clear and consistent communication with all of our staff. Teachers by nature are planners. We pour our hearts and our souls into our lessons and activities. We need time to do this effectively. By rushing to a full return, vital details may be overlooked. By not having every aspect of how, how our students and staff will be safe, those mistakes could cause people to get sick or worse. We want to be back. We are headed in the right direction, but let's do it right and not rush this very important decision. We look forward to a timely response and shared plans across all levels to help us and students to come back safely. End of comments.
This next comment is from Ann Monroe. I am very disappointed that the board voted to approve a return to school plan for secondary students when the plan presented was clearly not finalized. Watching the last board meeting, it was clear that several questions had yet to be answered. This means the plan is not safe and is being rushed through. On top of that, the teachers are just weeks away from getting the vaccines and being able to truly return safely. You cannot even show them the respect and consideration to delay this hybrid until then. Dr. Summers shared a previous, shared at a previous meeting that adolescents contract and spread COVID at the same rate as adults. Again, this means the plan is not safe at this point. I respectfully request that the hybrid model for seventh and eighth grade and 10th to 12th grade be delayed until March 1st, when all of our, when all or most of our teachers can be vaccinated. End of comment.
Next comment is from Emily Florence to the PCCS Board of Education and Administration. I am beyond disgusted with this district and the way this past year has been handled. When the crisis began, you allowed the secondary students to opt out of the final quarter. Why? They should have been in school finishing the year. When this academic year began, you gave those same students afternoons off from any classes. In addition, there were days that need, they needed to report and days they didn't. It was inconsistent and led to confusion. Zoom links didn't work. Teachers were late or no shows at times and these students were left hanging. Frankly, there has been little improvement over the course of the first semester. My daughter missed a final exam on Friday afternoon as everyone else was out of school. I'm sorry, on Friday, I'm missing the exam on Friday because the link would not allow her to enter the room and the teacher did his best to make it work. And so on Friday afternoon, as everyone else was out of school, she had to make up the exam. Had she been in a classroom, this would have not happened and she would have not had her afternoon plans affected. Now we have this screwed up plan to reintroduce in-person learning. Might I mention in-person was scheduled for implementation in October 4th, when we chose the safe start option in August. Today, on day one, my kids awoke to incomplete schedules and at 9:52 AM, class was to begin at 9:50. A text was sent from one teacher stating that she was taking a long-term medical leave of absence, thus the lack of a Zoom link. Did you not know of this prior? If not, shame on her. But if you did and you didn't properly address this, shame on you. We have no teacher in a senior class required for graduation. In the morning of the first class, we learn of this and you have no substitute scheduled. I'm sick and tired of hearing that we have, need to be patient. That this is all new to us and that we need to work through it together. You have had 11 months to work through this and figure it out. You clearly misled us with safe start as well because you, if you indeed had a plan in place for an October start date, this would have been executed much more smoothly by now. Our kids deserve better than this. You're failing. You're causing our kids to suffer. You're so inept, you're unable to adequately perform your duties. Please step down and allow someone qualified to take over. End of comment.
This next comment is from Tim Algren. How many students are in the media center at a given time and how is the overall Wi-Fi connection? How come we're back at school and PPP, PPE equipment for band hasn't arrived and has not been distributed yet? End of comment.
This next comment, excuse me, is from Brad Silverman. The utter hypocrisy being demonstrated at this meeting truly cannot be overstated. On the same day that sixth and ninth grade students and staff have begun in-person instruction, much of the staff still unvaccinated. You conduct this meeting in a virtual setting, each meeting attendant unmasked in a separate room, safe and free from the risks you have forced upon others. If your nearly unanimous choice was to begin returning our children or our district to an in-person setting, so be it. But if that is the case, you owe it to the students, staff and citizens of this community to hold yourselves to the same standard. Conduct your next meeting in person, in a single room with perhaps no windows or proper ventilation for at least 100 minutes straight. That is what you are forcing others to do. End of comment.
This next comment is from Erin Cisak. Can you please address the concern about non-freshmen who are assigned freshman classes, but who are not included in a cohort assignment for specialized classes? Essentially, these students will be missing in-person instruction until they will be allowed to return in-person approximately 31. Can these non-freshmen be included in a cohort to allow for them to attend in-person like freshmen are allowed to attend and sign in virtually for non-freshman classes? End of comment.
Next comment from Leslie McLees is blank. Uh, the comment after that is from Steve Gulyas. The comment is, dear PCCS board members, thank you for your continued commitment and effort for navigating this exceedingly difficult school year. As the parent of a secondary student, I was surprised and disappointed to hear of the upcoming plans for safe start. Although I understand the hybrid return to school plan occurred, occurring over the next three weeks, I was shocked to learn the board supported the full return to in-person learning later in February. To this point, I have been satisfied with the steps the board has taken to reduce the risk of COVID for in-person learning. The cornerstone of this plan has been six feet social distancing, which has suddenly been discarded for three to six feet. This is an admission that the virtual academy, this is an admission that the virtual academy enrollment has not been sufficiently incentivized, incentivized and a safe density for in-person learning cannot be obtained at full capacity. Following this plan will result in more teacher and student quarantines. Furthermore, we remain at a risk level E per state guidelines. Vaccine rollout is slow and not eligible for students. The new and more transmissible UK Brazilian variants of COVID have been found and are likely to increase in the next few weeks. And a full day, and the full day will introduce lunch and recess at the riskiest activity without allowing for midday cleaning. Why are we now taking a strategy that flies in face of the guidelines at a time when we have repeatedly, when we have been repeatedly told by public health experts that things will get worse before they get better in the spring and summer? After having been asked to commit to safe start plan for this semester back in early November, this change in philosophy now feels like nothing less than a bait and switch. Most frustrating is the board does not produce metrics by which PCCS will reopen and close school. This has not been produced since August when I first asked. I implore the board to stop shifting goalposts and public, publicize clear criteria for which the, will guide the board's reopening decisions. Although I appreciate this is an art and not a science, the board can surely give more insight into these decisions. I implore the board to delay the return of full day in-person learning until April 12th, one week after the return from spring break. By then we should have vaccine momentum, warmer weather, be past all major holidays and have data about the new strains of COVID all working in our favor just in time to preserve end of year traditions. Thank you for your time. End of comment.
This next comment is from Judy Foster. As a staff person of PCCS, I have submitted my survey of my desire to receive the COVID vaccine. As it is well known to the whole community, it is difficult to secure an appointment for receiving the vaccine. What can the district do to help staff receive the vaccine? This vaccine is critical to staff to be protected during face-to-face learning, which the district wants to begin on February 17th. All staff desiring the vaccine should be vaccinated before returning to face-to-face learning five days a week. End of comment.
Okay, this next comment is from Charles Hayne Line. Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I hope that that this evening finds you well. I also hope that you are taking the data into account when it comes to the amount of exposure that we are comfortable with regarding students and transmittable diseases in the classroom. Uh, everywhere else, people need to stay six feet apart to be safe. Inside the schools, it's three feet. Please explain the reason to me, the facts. There's also confusing details on what, what three feet between students actually means. Can we get some clarity on this issue, please? When asked these questions previously, I don't recall hearing a substantive answer. The district didn't have any control over the amount of vaccinations that, um, that would be available to teachers and staff. I understand that. However, the district did have the ability to postpone in-person learning until teachers were able to reasonably acquire vaccines. Please explain to the community the reasons why we are willing to place students and staff in harm's way without a reasonable amount of time to get vaccinated. Will any of you be joining teachers in the classrooms all day? Maybe take a stroll through the cafeterias at the park and enjoy a meal. If other districts are willing to give their teachers a chance to get vaccinated, it seems reasonable for our district to follow suit. Lastly, teachers have to be evaluated based on data and observations. I don't believe that I would be evaluated, evaluated as effective if I ever answered, I don't know, to a serious question about the way in which I address issues of health and safety in my classroom. If the answers to specific questions posed about health and safety, safety related to students in classrooms are, we are working on that. We don't know the answer at this time, et cetera. Should the timeline for in-person learning be moved back? End of comment.
Uh, this next comment is from Andrea Schultz. I want to publicly thank the board administration for getting our middle schoolers back in school. From the mouth of my sixth grader today, in-person is so much better than virtual because I'm not as easily distracted. End of comment.
Our next comment is from Susan Willis. With the increase of new strains of COVID rapidly increasing in Wayne and Washtenaw counties and the fact, and the fact it is more contagious and therefore more easily transmitted, will this be considered prior to bringing more students back at the high schools? End of comment.
This next comment is from Bill Mackey. The return to school has felt rushed. Many issues are confusing and the communication has not been very clear. I'm very concerned regarding why there's a rush prior to most employers at PCCS as well as students not receiving the vaccine. There are so many people at the park and social distancing cannot be guaranteed. And our public schools has deemed it not safe for a in-person return learning. It is very hard to understand how the board's decision is backed by science. End of comment.
Okay, and that was our last comment. So we are done with the citizens comment portion of the evening. The next thing on our agenda is we have action items discussion. Uh, we have action item 210142, consider approval of a resolution for reconfirmation of extended COVID-19 learning plan. First and final reading. I wondered if we could have that up on the screen? Please? Thank you. All right, so, um, this is the resolution. That is so small. I'm going to have to put it on my own computer because I can't. I cannot read that small. Uh, so the resolution is it was moved by member and seconded by a member to reconfirm the Plymouth Canton Community Schools Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan that was approved on September 29th, 2020. This plan recommends that students continue to receive instruction through two distinct models. One, the PCCS Virtual Academy, a 100% virtual model. And two, Safe Start Remote Learning with PCCS, a model that became 100% virtually with a planned phase and approach to in-person learning. In Safe Start Remote Learning with PCCS, all students in grades K to nine and high school specialized courses will receive in-person instruction through a hybrid model with a phased in approach to full day in-person learning for all students using the following timeline. January 19th, all kindergarten through fifth grade students in a hybrid model. January 26th, all students in sixth grade, ninth grade and high school specialized classes in a hybrid model. January 28th, Starkweather Academy students in identified courses in a hybrid model. February 1st, all seventh and eighth grade students in the hybrid model. February 17th, all kindergarten through fifth grade students in full five days per week in-person model. February 18th, all sixth grade through ninth grade students and students in high school specialized classes in a full four day per week in-person model. Wednesdays in February will remain virtual for students in grades six to 12. March 1st, all sixth, seventh, eighth and ninth grade students in a full five day per week in-person model. Students in grades 10, 11 and 12 will continue to receive instruction remote, remotely until March 1st with opportunities for additional in-person support for students with academic and social emotional needs. March 1st, all 10th, 11th and 12th grade students return to in-person learning either in a hybrid or fully in-person model to be determined. Students in high school specialized courses will transition to full days consistent with the agreed upon timeline. If necessary, based upon the, based on the review of school, district, community and county metrics and in consultation with the local health department, the district may pause in-person instruction for a specified period of time at a particular school level or district wide. This reconfirmation is a requirement of MCL 388.1698A of the school, State School Aid Act. So that is the resolution. So now I am looking for a motion. Uh, consider approval of resolution for reconfirmation of extended COVID-19 learning plan. First and final reading, it is action item 210142.
Madam President, I move that we consider, uh, the resolution, uh, for approval of a reconfirmation of the Plymouth Canton Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. First and final reading, action item 210142.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved. Okay, it has been moved by Member Keough and seconded by Member Brooks that we consider approval of a resolution for reconfirmation of extended COVID-19 Learning Plan, first and final reading. Action item 210142. Is there any discussion at this point?
Madam President, I do have one question.
Okay.
Ms. Merritt had spoken how this process is our targets and our goals and that I see that there's flexibility written into this about returning to remote learning. But is the flexibility also included in this to continue in a hybrid model if the circumstances or the situation deems that that is supported?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, Mr. Brooks, can you take us through a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Member Brooks, yes. Member Christensen?
Yes.
Member Keough?
Yes.
Member McCoy?
No.
Member Sado?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1.
Okay, and now we are at future agenda topics. Does anybody have any future agenda topics they would like to discuss at this point?
I do.
Yes.
Well, one point of clarity. So I saw on the Future Agenda Topics, the Summer Program Plan added for March 23rd. My question of clarity is, is that our target date for final approval of the Summer Program Plan? Or is that the start of the planning for the Summer Program Plan?
That presentation will just provide an update for the Board of Education. There will be an approval that is needed for our Summer Programming Plan.
Okay. When would we anticipate the approval for the Summer Programming?
So the approval is not, it's not an action item from the Board that we continue or we budget for our summer programs. It's just a part of our yearly budget and that's something that continues annually. So we just update the Board just on our plans and the actions that we're taking to enhance continuity of learning from students, but it would not be an actionable item for the Board members.
Will that be different at all because of COVID?
In terms of an approval?
Correct.
No, so the instructional program is under the purview of the administration. And so we just share some updates on the things that we're offering. Always get input, but it's more of an for you to know and be aware of those programs and the curriculum that is developed, but it's not an approved type of item.
Okay, and then final question or second question, the Fall Program Return to School Strategy, when would we anticipate that being presented to the Board or to the community as well?
So that's, are you asking the question in terms of COVID or just the start of school?
Both. I mean, I guess ultimately what I'm trying to do is just get ahead of, you know, some of these decisions so we have time to kind of process them and see what's going on. So really looking at the timeline to be able to identify when some of those things are coming down the pipe.
So for just the start of school, believe it or not, this is the time period that we will begin to plan next school year. So we'll see our community, you'll see surveys coming up soon, talking about what is their goal for next year? Is it an in-person option versus a virtual option? We begin the scheduling process early so students start determining what classes they want and want to sign up so we can build the master schedule. So kindergarten roundup is coming. All of those things are just, they're just on a cycle, an annual cycle. So we're about to enter that phase. The new component of this is according to pandemic, we don't know where we will be in the fall, so we plan for a full return. But if we're not able to be on a full return, you know, what we've said when we started this pandemic is that this was our first year offering a virtual program. We have success with that virtual program and we will continue to move forward, offering 100% virtual program and plan for the start of school, but at the same time, continue to have plans in the event that we are not post-pandemic and need a different type of instructional model. So that'll be something that we have to continue to plan and discuss along the way.
Great. So I would just request if possible to put that on the timeline so that we can see when that'd be discussed on the Board because absolutely, we don't know what the fall is going to look like, but I think that's even more of the reasons to have multiple, you know, plans in place so that as we roll into the fall, we have some, you know, some plans in place that we can make a decision around. So, and then one addition, so much talk around social and emotional. Would love to see a presentation on what exactly we're doing around social emotional. I was really inspired by the presentation from Salem Principal around some of those things. Would love to learn more about that. And then specifically, any dollar amounts, any budget that could align to helping to improve the social emotional support that we're providing to the youth as they return.
So just in general, there is a presentation that's already on the calendar for the MTSS process. Multi-tier Systems of Support, and so that is already a component of that presentation. We'll talk about an update for the Board on our social emotional learning.
Ms. Merritt, what's the timing for that presentation? Is that before the budget process?
Um, I don't have the calendar in front of me. Does any, Ms. Rale, do you know what date that is on the calendar for presentation?
I'm going to look it up right now and I'll be right back.
Okay.
Okay, because it might be useful for us to have that before the budget process so that if there's, if, as part of that cycle, we want to make sure that we've addressed that or have any input on it, then we can include it in the budget cycle.
As we talk about social emotional support for students, I know we had talked about social emotional support for our staff. I think that is something I would also like to hear more about if we could tie that in as well. Or that could be, if you want that to be a separate topic, we could do that.
At the current time, April 13th is our targeted date for the MTSS update.
I think that's probably past the point that we have the interlock sessions in the budget, isn't it?
I think it's actually right on time for that period. That's when we're doing the, Ms. Piaz, when we do the school sessions, the trade-offs, is that April is typically that? Where are we with that process? I think we're, I think it's going to be right on time.
So if there was input that came from that meeting, it could still be incorporated in the budget cycle without throwing everything out of whack?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, is there anything else for future agenda topics?
President McCoy, I would like to add an agenda topic. I'm not sure if this could fall under some of our community forums that we had talked about in the past, but I would like to see if we could coordinate a community forum targeted for parents with regard to parent support groups and workshops and how we can support parents in supporting their students. Again, I think this is a holistic approach as we are in the midst of this pandemic with so many moving parts. Whatever we can do to support parents, what resources are out there, what the district is doing, what additional work needs to be done in that group, I would like to explore that. Thank you.
If I can get clarity, are you saying a workshop for parents or an update to the Board as to what we're doing for parents?
Both, both.
Okay, so for a presentation, maybe an update as to what we're doing and then talk about next steps. Would that satisfy your request?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, well, if people think of something at a later time, you are free to email it. So the next item is follow-up Board questions and the last meeting, we want, the Board wanted to receive follow-up information on the nine children that would have been impacted by the third-grade reading bill, had it been. So those are children now in fifth grade.
And as we get that information, we will follow up with Board notes.
So that is, that is an outstanding question that we will get at a certain point.
That is.
All right. So we have come to the end of our agenda. We will be adjourning to a special meeting. It is the Dynamic Plan. So as is our normal practice with our special meetings, this is a workshop meeting we are doing, which we do not make decisions in. We're going through, the district will start the Dynamic Plan process soon, so this is kind of a giving us some information and the Board perhaps discussing what they think the strategic initiative should be, but we are not making decisions. It is an open meeting. People are welcome to watch the meeting. It will be streamed live. It will however not be because it is more of a workshop-type meeting and the things that are discussed are not actually always district plans. They are things that might happen. We do not generally speaking tape those, but people are free to stay and watch it. We will be having a short break between the meetings so that, part of the reason is some of the people, the district employees are then free to leave and log off and also so that we can stretch our legs for a few minutes before we get going. So is there anything else from anybody before we adjourn the meeting? All right, hearing nothing. It is 10 o'clock. We are adjourning.